...gatherings, this meeting is being facilitated electronically via Teams meeting. All council members will be able to fully participate in this evening's work. Tonight's meeting includes two public hearings. Town Council understands the importance of active citizen participation. Public comments were accepted from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today. Comments received from interested parties providing full name and address via the public hearings at townofmorrisville.org email address will be read verbatim during the public hearing for up to three minutes each for a total of 30 minutes. And we're going to discuss that a little bit more in a few moments. At this time Eric Smith, our Town Clerk, will conduct a roll call of all council members. Mr. Smith?
Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Present.
Councilmember Garamella?
Present.
Councilmember Rao?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Present.
All councils present.
Thank you, sir. We're at item three. Is there a motion and a second to invoke Rule 19? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao.
I make a motion that we invoke Rule 19.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Scroggins-Johnson. Town Clerk Smith will conduct a roll call vote on that motion, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Uh, Town Clerk Smith will conduct a roll call vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Would someone please turn off their face supply? Or mute? Or mute.
It's coming from Will.
Okay, he can still mute.
Okay, better than.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
And I'm sorry, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, did I call your name prior to the interruption?
You did, but I heard the feedback and I was waiting for it to clear before I said "aye." I did say "aye," but I'll say "aye" again.
All right, just didn't want to leave you out.
Yeah.
The motion to adopt, to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policies review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflicts of interest with any items on the agenda. Do any council members have any such conflicts? Check in the chat. Okay, seeing none, before I ask for a motion to adopt, I'd like to turn this over to Town Manager Page for just a moment to discuss an item about the public hearings. I believe we have a number of them and staff has a recommendation. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor Colley mentioned, there are two public hearings scheduled for you this evening. We received 25 to 26 public comments, all related to one of those public hearings, which is the land use plan adoption. You did receive those. It was just a few short minutes ago. It took us some additional effort to compile them this time. There are a number of very lengthy comments, some that include additional lengthy exhibits or recommendations or exhibits. We received a number from Morrisville property owners who are properties that do not have addresses yet. We have some from residents who indicated they are residents in Morrisville but did not provide a specific address. I do not believe that we will be able to get all of the comments read in 30 minutes. I do not believe all of the comment letters, even without the exhibits, are able to be read in three minutes. I propose, given the importance of the land use plan and the involvement of the people involved in that process, that council may want to suspend all of the rules and hear all of the comments. I would suggest the initial letters. You have the exhibits that you could review after the meeting and read them all for as long as that takes, including eliminating the three-minute requirement. And I'm going to turn that back over to the mayor to discuss.
Okay. So, given virtual, it's usually easier to have people to opt out. So, does anyone have any concerns of following those guidelines, which are essentially, we're going to go past 30 minutes so that we hear from everyone who we usually hear from, verbatim? My one concern would be the three minutes. I don't know if that's a precedent we want to get rid of despite the importance of this. So, as long as I don't see stuff in the chat, but I do see a question from Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. You are muted, Ms. Johnson? Ms. Scroggins-Johnson?
That's Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. I am okay with suspending the 30-minute allotment because of the criticality of the topic of the land use plan, but I don't think we should exceed the three minutes per public comment. We wouldn't do that in a live session. I do appreciate that we have the full information that was provided to us by the clerk so that we can review the entirety of the comment in an offline format, but I don't think we should exceed three minutes. I just, I think there's, it creates an unfair environment. If we're virtual, we can exceed three minutes, but if we're not virtual, we can't. I'm not sure we want to go there, so that's my comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. I tend to agree with your assessment of that. I see in chat at least one other council member is in agreement with you on that. I'd love to see or hear from other council members who also want to limit it to three minutes. If we get to four, then we'll go ahead and do that, otherwise we'll go with the Town Manager plan. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao for a comment.
I would agree with Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson that we should just limit it to three minutes. We wouldn't, we wouldn't grant an exception in a live meeting.
Thank you, sir.
So, I'm in line with that.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
So, I'm sorry, Councilmember Robati was before me. If we could let her go, please?
Of course. Councilmember Robati?
Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Yeah, I just wanted to say that if anything, I think that in a regular council meeting, when there were many comments, we would be more likely, rather than less, to enforce that three minutes strictly. I don't agree that we should waive the three minutes, but I do agree that we should hear from as many people as possible, but I don't agree that they should go longer than three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem Johnson?
I'll be quick and I'm going to say I agree.
Okay. Okay, we have general consensus that to follow the Town Manager's proposed plan, with the exception of please have the Town Clerk stop at three minutes, knowing that we will have the ability to read the entire thing in its entirety. Does that give staff adequate direction, Town Manager?
It does. Just one note, please, on behalf of staff. Typically, in a regular meeting, at three minutes, you ask someone to summarize the rest of their comments. I don't think it would be fair to do that, so Eric will just stop and allow you to review the rest when you review the comments that have been submitted to you in writing.
Thank you. That sounds very reasonable. Okay. Given that, I'd entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. I'll recognize Councilmember Rao, please.
I move that we adopt this evening's agenda.
Okay. Looking for a second in chat. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
I second that motion with the caveat that we're suspending the rules for the 30-minute time limit and we're only, we're maintaining the three-minute individual limit.
Okay. I'd like to ask the Town Attorney if we need to have Councilmember Rao adjust his motion or if that can go forward as is.
I think that can go forward since we just had a full discussion of that.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion on table. I'll ask Town Clerk Smith to conduct a roll call vote on that, that motion, as stated by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the regular agenda as amended passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. There are five items on this evening's consent agenda. A resolution and capital project ordinance amendment authorizing the purchase of real property at 120, 125, 127, and 129 Scoggins Avenue. A capital project ordinance amendment for McCrimmon Parkway Extension Phase II. A resolution approving committee chair and vice chair appointments for MPEAC and PSAC. An approval of two sets of December meeting minutes. Do any council members wish to remove any of those consent item agendas for further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
To recognize Councilmember Robati?
Second that motion.
Thank you. Town Clerk Smith will conduct a roll call vote on adoption of the consent agenda, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the regular agenda as amended passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. There are five items on this evening's consent agenda. A resolution and capital project ordinance amendment authorizing the purchase of real property at 120, 125, 127, and 129 Scoggins Avenue. A capital project ordinance amendment for McCrimmon Parkway Extension Phase II. A resolution approving committee chair and vice chair appointments for MPEAC and PSAC. An approval of two sets of December meeting minutes. Do any council members wish to remove any of those consent item agendas for further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
To recognize Councilmember Robati?
Second that motion.
Thank you. Town Clerk Smith will conduct a roll call vote on adoption of the consent agenda, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We are now at item seven, administrative reports. There are two administrative reports tonight. A second quarter financial report and a senior center update. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has any questions. Are there any questions on either of these items? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. We're now at presentations. There are two proclamations this evening. A proclamation recognizing Black History Month and a proclamation recognizing the Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson to read the proclamation recognizing Black History Month. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. It's an honor to read tonight's Black History Month proclamation. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter Godwin Woodson noted, African-American scholar and son of former slaves, founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, which was later renamed the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas, Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week February 6th, I'm sorry, February 12th, 1926, which was celebrated the second week of February for many years, as this coincided with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. And whereas in 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial, Black History Week was expanded and became established as Black History Month and is now celebrated all over North America. And whereas, Morrisville is particularly fortunate to have a rich, diverse culture. The Shiloh community was established in 1867, just 15 short years after Morrisville was chartered. Prior to the Civil War, Shiloh was home to free African-Americans. During the month of February, the town has emphasized the importance and impact of Black history in Morrisville through the lens of the Shiloh community by highlighting historical markers and Greenway signage through social media and other resources. And whereas, the observance of Black History Month calls our nation's attention to the continued need to build a society that embraces our democratic ideals, this year celebrations in recognition of Black History Month. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize February 2021 as Black History Month in Morrisville and urges all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all.
Mayor, I believe you're muted.
Yes, I was. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I will go ahead and read the next proclamation. I was mentioning that it's unfortunate due to the circumstances, we cannot have a live meeting, because in the past, we've usually had a number of people here demonstrating the Yoga-Thon poses. But I'll go ahead and get started. This is recognizing the Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon. Whereas yoga is an ancient Hindu practice developed thousands of years ago in the Indian subcontinent for maintaining spiritual, mental, and physical well-being. And whereas surya, namaskara, or sun salutation, is a traditional yogic practice combining a sequence of postures with breathing exercises. And whereas Hindu Swaya Samvek, sangh, or HSS, is a nonprofit charitable organization with over 235 branches in 173 cities and in 32 states, including 10 branches of the state of North Carolina, through which it conducts a Hindu values education program and community service activities such as food drives, providing hot meals in shelters, and providing PPE to first responders in several cities across North Carolina. And whereas HSS is organizing its annual Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon in the goal of having 1,000 individual participants cumulatively complete 11,000 repetitions of surya, namaskara, to promote the spiritual, mental, and physical well-being of all members of the community. And whereas yoga enthusiasts, yoga studios, local schools, and other community organizations are participating in the HSS Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon, now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize HSS for organizing its annual Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon to promote the spiritual, mental, and physical well-being of all members of the community. Okay, that was a good one. That was a mouthful. At this time, we are now at item nine, public address. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. There were no comments received for a public address.
Okay. We are now at item 10, public hearing. There are two public hearing items on the agenda. Consideration of annexation for property located at Zero International Drive and a resolution pertaining to the land use plan adoption. Emily Langston, Planner 2, will facilitate the first item. Ms. Langston?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 202170 is consideration of a voluntary annexation petition for 0.31 acres of property at Zero International Drive. Town Council was briefed on this request at the January 12th meeting. I have no updates tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I'm looking in chat to see if our council members have any questions on this item. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Town Clerk Smith, are there any public hearing submissions for this item?
No, sir, there were not.
Okay. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing as of midnight tomorrow, January 27th. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing tomorrow at midnight.
Thank you. We're waiting a second. Would any, okay, I'll recognize Councilmember Robati, please. Who may be muted?
Sorry, yes, sorry. Second the motion.
Thank you very much, Town Clerk Smith. If you do a roll call vote to close the public hearing as of midnight tomorrow, January 27th, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to close the public hearing as of midnight, January 27th, passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We are scheduled to vote on this item at our next meeting on February 9th. Any last comments, Ms. Langston?
No additional comments from me, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item, 10B. Brad West, Senior Planner, will facilitate that item. Mr. West?
Good evening, council members. So, you may remember at the last January 12th meeting, you all had some items that you were interested in us following up on, and so we're just going to quickly go through those items in your attachments prior to us getting into the public hearing. So, the first item on that list, you all asked us to highlight text associated with tree protection, open space, parkland dedication, and related subjects. We provided in attachment one, and I'll show you right here, a highlighted version of the current land use plan draft. You'll notice at the bottom right, you'll see a little legend, text legend here. Every page, or every line, I should say, of text that relates to trees, green space, open space, parkland dedication has been highlighted. And so, as you scroll through this plan, and folks at home want to do the same thing, again, it's attachment one, you will see that 43 pages of this current draft, 43 pages, talk about those subjects. We also added some text where appropriate, and you all asked us to beef it up if we could, so we did that. I'll get to the revision list here in a second that talks specifically about what was added. But just wanted to call that, literally half the plan now talks about those issues. So, for folks that were concerned about that at the last meeting, just wanted to call that out. And also, you may hear some public comments tonight with concerns about those issues, tree protection, open space. I encourage everyone to take a look at that highlighted draft plan, because that'll really shed some light on those issues. Same thing was asked about single-family residential development, detached development, clarifying where in the document it calls out the preference for single-family detached residential outside of the sub-areas, and in particular emphasis with that sort of housing west of NC 54. So, we have also highlighted that in the plan. That is this sort of pinkish-purple color on this legend here. And there's a total of seven pages that touch on that subject. So, hopefully, there will be no confusion about where the plan stands on those issues. So, next, item two, we have the update of the plan revisions list. So, some of you wanted to see some page numbers on the planner revisions list. We did add page numbers to those revisions, and we also identified some new revisions. Again, text you asked us to beef up in the plan, we went ahead and did that, per your request. So, those are all listed in attachment two. For those of you at home following along, the revisions list. And I think I have that up here. Yep, so again, just this list right here, all of them have page numbers, and then the new items are highlighted with this sort of green new tag, and you can see the new text added, as well as the page number. Item three was a, this is a little tricky one, so bear with me as this loads. Okay, good, it loaded. This was a map requested of demonstrating, or I'm sorry, illustrating which parcels in Morrisville could potentially see an increase in allowable density if the future land use map was implemented through zoning. I should underline and underscore this, just like I have in previous meetings, that staff is not, or the consultants are not recommending that the town do a town-wide initiated rezoning to fulfill this map in its entirety. We are really asking you to stay constrained to the sub-areas if there are any future rezonings, and then let the rest sort of organically happen as development comes in. Again, this is looking 10 to 20 years out. Specifically, this is sort of a complex map, so I'm going to zoom in here to a little, just to show you what this actually is saying. So, you'll notice a bunch of different colors on the map, and if you can see this legend, basically what this map is saying is that currently, there is zoning in place on the ground today, per the UDO. And that has a very specific max allowable density number associated with each of those zoning districts. This shows you where those parcels may end up if, in fact, the future land use map were to be implemented. And you'll notice that there is a range of allowable densities in those future land use designation conversions. And the reason for that is that the plan, if you read the plan, you'll notice that there's no actual specific density cap recommended. It's more of a range. The actual number will be determined through the UDO code rewrites, and in that discussion, that'll happen posted option. So, it's not exactly apples to apples, but it at least gives you an idea of what is increasing and what is not. So, for example, I'm going to pick on a parcel, I'm going to pick on Breckenridge here for a minute. No offense to Breckenridge. So, this is a parcel that is currently designated in the zoning map as low-density residential. We know from our UDO that low-density residential has a max density of four and a half units per acre. The future land use map envisions this area as medium-density residential, since it's next to a both medium and high-density residential neighborhood. So, you could expect to see density within the range of above four and a half units an acre to up to seven and a half units an acre. So, again, not an exact number, but a range. And we do that for several other parcels throughout town. You'll notice, give me a second as I zoom out. You'll notice there are a fair amount of pockets of undeveloped or underdeveloped land that may receive some potential increase in allowable density, but again, that would be with the understanding that it is all rezoned, which we are not recommending. So, just wanted to point that out, and again, I know we're waiting until after the public hearing for questions, but happy to answer more specific questions about this map. So, finally, let me just exit out of here. Finally, or not finally, one of the last things that you all specifically asked for was to confirm that structured parking in the McCrimmon Extension area was encouraged and not, but not mandated. And so, I can confirm that. That is on page 72 in the plan, in the third paragraph. So, if you're looking for the specific language there, that is where you can find it. Of course, we'd love to see structured parking in that area in some cases, but again, not going to be recommended that it's mandated. Number five, I think on my list, is something that I wanted to, and I'm sorry, I'm going to have to share my screen again, unfortunately, but something that I really should have called out at the last meeting but didn't get a chance to was, we added, so we had a discussion at the October retreat about, you know, what would it look like if we had a, you know, a development that incorporated usable green space, you know, actual dedicated usable green space. There's a lot of discussion about, you know, do we want to just have green space sort of in random locations that nobody can really utilize, or do you want to consolidate it into a park, or lawn, or whatever? So, that's what we did in our McCrimmon Extension rendering. So, you'll notice, I don't know if you've all taken another look at this rendering since October, it has changed. We have an example, so here's the weight competition center, and then white is an existing
Thank you, awaiting a second. With any count, okay, I'll recognize Councilmember Robati, please. We may be muted.
Sorry, yes, sorry, second the motion.
Thank you very much, Town Clerk Smith, if you do a roll call vote to close the public hearing as of midnight tomorrow, January 27th, please.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamello.
Aye.
Councilmember Raugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Scruggins Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to close the public hearing as of midnight, January 27th, passes members.
Thank you very much, we are scheduled to vote on this item at our next meeting on February 9th, any last comments, Ms. Langston?
Uh, no additional comments from me, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, we'll move on to the next item, 10B, Brad West, Senior Planner, will facilitate that item, Mr. West.
Good evening, councilmembers, so you may remember at the last January 12th meeting, you all had some items that you were interested in us following up on, and so we're just gonna quickly go through those items in your attachments prior to us getting into the public hearing. So the first item on that list, you all asked us to highlight text associated with tree protection, open space, parkland dedication, and related subjects, we provided in attachment one, and I'll show you right here, a highlighted version of the current land use plan draft, you'll notice at the bottom right, you'll see a little legend, text legend here, every page, or every line, I should say, of text that relates to trees, green space, open space, parkland dedication, has been highlighted, and so as you scroll through this plan, and folks at home want to do the same thing, again, it's attachment one, you will see that forty-three pages of this, of this current draft, forty-three pages, talk about those subjects. We also added some text where appropriate, and you all asked us to beef it up if we could, so we did that, I'll get to the revision list here in a second that talks specifically about what was added, but just wanted to call that, literally half the plan now talks about those issues, so for folks that were concerned about that at the last meeting, just wanted to call that out, and also you may hear some public comments tonight with concerns about those issues, tree protection, open space, I encourage everyone to take a look at that highlighted draft plan, because that'll really shed some light on, on those issues. Same thing was asked about single-family residential development, detached development, clarifying where in the document it calls out the preference for single-family detached residential outside of the sub-areas, and in particular emphasis with how, that sort of housing west of NC 54, so we have also highlighted that in the plan, that is this sort of pinkish-purple color on this legend here, and there's a total of seven pages that touch on that subject, so hopefully there will be no confusion about where the plan stands on those issues. So, next, item two, we have the update of the plan revisions list, so some of you wanted to see some page numbers on the plan revisions list, we did add page numbers to those revisions, and we also identified some new revisions, again, texts you asked us to beef up in the plan, we, we went ahead and did that, per your request, so those are all listed in attachment two, for those of you at home following along, the revisions list, and I think I have that up here, yep, so again, just this list right here, all of them have page numbers, and then the new items are highlighted with this sort of green new tag, and you can see the new text added, as well as the page number. Item three was a, this is a little tricky one, so bear with me as this loads, okay, good, it loaded, this was a map requested of demonstrating, or I'm sorry, illustrating which parcels in Morrisville could potentially see an increase in allowable density if the future land use map was implemented through zoning. I should underline and underscore this, just like I have in, in previous meetings, that staff is not, or the consultants are not recommending that the town do a townwide initiated rezoning to fulfill this map in its entirety, we are really asking you to stay constrained to the sub-areas, if there are any future rezonings, and then let these, the rest sort of organically happen, as development comes in, or in this, again, this is looking ten to twenty years out. Specifically, this is sort of a complex map, so I'm gonna zoom in here to a little, just to show you what this actually is saying, so you'll notice a bunch of different colors on the map, and if you can see this legend, basically what this map is saying is that currently there is a, there is zoning in place on the ground today, per the U D O, and that has a very specific max allowable density number associated with those, each of those zoning districts. This shows you where those parcels may end up if, in fact, the future land use map were to be implemented, and you'll notice that there is a range of allowable densities in those future land use designation conversions, and the reason for that is that the plan, if you read the plan, you'll notice that there's no actual specific density cap recommended, it's more of a range, the actual number will be determined through the U D O code rewrites, and in that discussion, that'll happen posted option, so it's not exactly apples to apples, but it at least gives you an idea of what is increasing and what is not, so for example, I'm going to pick on a parcel, I'm gonna pick on Breckenridge here for a minute, no offense to Breckenridge, so this, this is a parcel that is currently designated in the, in the zoning map as low-density residential, we know from our U D O that low-density residential has a max density of four and a half units per acre, the future land use map envisions this area as medium-density residential, since it's next to a both medium and high-density residential neighborhood, so you could expect to see density within the range of above four and a half units an acre to up to seven and a half units an acre, so again, not an exact number, but a, but a range, so, and we do that for several other parcels throughout town, you'll notice, give me a second as I zoom out, you'll notice there are a fair amount of pockets of undeveloped or underdeveloped land that may receive some potential increase in allowable density, but again, that would be with the understanding that it is all rezoned, which we are not recommending, so just wanted to point that out, and again, I know we're waiting until after the public hearing for questions, but happy to answer more specific questions about this map. So finally, let me just X out of here, finally, or not finally, one of the last things that you all specifically asked for was to confirm that structured parking in the McCrimmon Extension area was encouraged and not, but not mandated, and so I can confirm that, that is on page seventy-two in the plan, under third paragraph, so if you, you're looking for the specific language there, that is where you can find it, of course, we'd love to see structured parking in that area, in some cases, but again, not, not going to be recommended that it's mandated. A, number five, I think on my list is something that I wanted to, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to share my screen again unfortunately, but something that I really should have called out at the last meeting, but didn't get a chance to, was we added, so we had a discussion at the October retreat about, you know, what would it look like if we had a, you know, a development that incorporated usable green space, you know, actual dedicated usable green space, there's a lot of discussion about, you know, do we want to just have green space sort of in random locations that nobody can really utilize, or do you want to consolidate it into a park, or lawn, or whatever, so that's what we did in our McCrimmon Extension rendering, so you'll notice, I don't know if you, you've all taken another look at this rendering since October, it has changed, we have an example, so here's the Wake Competition Center, and then White is an existing facility, we have an example of how that could potentially look, so what you're seeing here is sort of a central lawn green space lined with retail service uses, like restaurants, bars, we have a lodging use sort of at the centerpiece here with structured parking, we are showing multifamily residential that's vertically integrated also, as well as horizontally integrated with these standalone uses, it's hard to see, but underneath that orange, which is residential, there's a little strip of red that represents some sort of commercial use, and so you'll notice all the parking is to the side and rear of the buildings, we're trying to really present the buildings up to the street, have the parking sort of secondary to the side and rear, out of sight, to really enhance that pedestrian experience, and that street wall effect that you may see happen along McCrimmon Parkway. We also made some edits to some of the other parcels, we have some more green space integration here, some more structured parking demonstrated, it's something you all specifically wanted to see, and we have some more structured parking examples here as well, and some more vertical mixed-use integration there, so encourage you all at home, if you're following along, the draft has changed since this was presented back in October, so encourage you to take another look at that concept, oh, and one last thing, we sort of spaced apart the multifamily a little more than it was before, so it's sort of, sort of more balanced than maybe at first, first attempt at this concept, so I will X out again, and the last thing, so we, there were some folks wanting a little more clarity about the FAA stance, this was in October, the FAA stance on some of the recommendations of the plan, specifically the airport overlay and the presence of some limited residential, like multifamily, I'm happy to report that we, as of today, received a letter from the FAA that clarifies their position on this matter, and the town clerk will have the honor of reading that for you. So that is all I have for you, I would like to just hand it over back to the mayor or the town clerk for the public hearing.
Okay, I'll ask first, if any town council members have any questions about any items that Mr. West just went over, I just have a quick comment about the, the little park space that he just indicated, it reminds me a lot of Midtown Park, which I believe is also a private developed park, but that would be hopefully something that a developer would choose to move forward with, I'll recognize Councilmember Fender for a comment, followed by Councilmember Robati, Councilmember Fender.
Thank you, Brad, and I appreciate you guys adding the additional text supporting, you know, additional green space, I do have one question or request, you know, we, we've highlighted all these sentences and areas about preserving the, the tree canopy, and wanting, we added text for additional parks and greenways, but on page nineteen, under goals, we have environmental stewardship as the very last goal, and so I'm wondering if we can bump that up a little bit in the list of goals, possibly making it goal number two or three, I mean, it's the very last goal, even behind economic development, so I think that would be more in alignment with the rest of the, the document, and I think I mentioned this early on back in May, when we reviewed the land use plan hard copy the first time.
Yeah, so, and I'll, that's certainly something we can do, if you and the rest of council are interested in that, and, and just so you know, these are not in any particular order, these are all equally important, but I'm happy to, if the council wants to do that, we're absolutely happy to, to do that. And one thing I should mention, I forgot to mention, in the revisions, we beefed up the board, per your request, to add some implementation language as well, I think there's some concern that we only focused on the issue, but we didn't quickly touch upon how the plan addressed, or which of those issues the plan addresses, so we added that language, and I encourage folks to take a look at that, because that is brand-new to the plan as of tonight.
And I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure thing.
Okay, so Brad, those goals, you said they're not in any particular order, how were they, they're just put in there?
They're just put in there, I mean, if you all have a different arrangement that you would like, happy to swap it out, but they're all equally important, no, no goal is more important than the other.
Well, I still think it, it gives the perception that environmental stewardship is the least of our worries.
So, unless, I have a couple of comments queued up, but if someone has any comment about this, I'll ask you to comment if you have a problem with staff moving that up to like second or third goal, wherever they think that fits well. So not seeing any comments on that sub-question?
I do have a comment, that is what my comment's about, yes, please.
Okay, no problem.
I, I, I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm, I'm actually more than fine with that, I think, but Brad, to, to maybe avoid confusion, even after we make the change we're talking about, can, can you put some kind of smaller wording in the box somewhere saying, these are all equally important, that they're not in any order, so that, you know, folks are not confused about the other issues, quite frankly, you know, like transportation, and, I mean, I think that's really important, transportation, concurrent transportation infrastructure is incredibly important to our community, always has been, always will be, so maybe if you could beef up the wording around that, it would be helpful.
Would you all be okay, just thinking out loud here, if we just got rid of the numbering altogether and just called it a goal, and then maybe moved environmental stewardship to the first column, so it looks like it's more of a focus?
Personally, I would still say some kind of small wording in the box at the bottom that says, in no particular order, they were, they're equally important, and we're addressing all of them, something to that effect, because that's what you just said, that's, that's how I feel, I don't know about others, and, and again, to avoid confusion down the road that others may have about some of these other goals, that, that would be my suggestion, numbered or not, numbered or not, quite frankly, thank you.
Is everyone else okay with that, that, we can certainly do that?
I'm all right with that.
And I think getting rid of the numbers is probably a good idea, because that implies order, and I not use the word equally important, just all important, because some people do have different opinions about which are more important than others, but they are all important.
All right, will do, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Fender, did you have any other comments or questions about what Brad's just gone over, we're gonna have lengthy discussion after the public hearing?
No, that's it.
Okay, next in the queue is Councilmember Robati, please, with a question?
If there's going to be lengthy discussion after the public hearing, I'm fine with holding my question, thank you.
Okay, just trying to address the changes that Brad just brought forth while they're fresh. Mayor Protim Johnson, did you have another comment, or was that addressed?
No, that's all I have right now, thank you.
Thank you very much, so at this time, I don't see any other comments or questions about what you just went over, Mr. West, so at this time, I'll open up the public hearing, and I'll recognize Town Clerk Smith to go through the comment, the public hearing comments as we discussed earlier, and feel free to stop in between and tell us how we're doing, or how it's going for you, Mr. Smith, go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. The first public comment received is from, and I do apologize if I mispronounce any names in advance, Ragana Nalamata, to town of Morrisville, our group, R O I Investments LLC, owns Lot 12 and 13, neighboring the McCrimmon Parkway Extension in Morrisville, and is currently with zoning of lodging, commercial, and office. With the future outlook of post-pandemic, where there could be less demand for office space, we would like to request for updating the zoning of Lot 12 and 13 to include residential zoning, as well in addition to lodging, commercial, and office. We anticipate there will be greater demand with mixed-use development, and we will be in better place to generate consistent revenue to our group and the town of Morrisville in taxes. Kindly consider our earnest request. The second comment received is from the former members and chairs of the RDU AA Board of Directors, the mailing address is 1000 Trade Drive, RDU Airport, North Carolina, 27623. Dear councilmembers, regional community leaders, and former board members and chairs of the Raleigh Durham Airport Authority Board, we have watched our region grow and seen firsthand Raleigh Durham International Airport's contributions to the Triangle's growth, economy, and quality of life. Over the years, we have listened to community members, fielding noise complaints, settle litigation, and come to understand what citizens of the Triangle want and need from RDU to continue balancing economic development and quality of life. We were surprised when we became aware of the proposed changes to the town of Morrisville's 2009 land use plan. These changes would authorize multifamily residential development in areas within the existing airport overlay district. The town and RDU AA have had a successfully collaborative relationship for decades, which now seems in jeopardy. We have been following the issue closely since learning of your land use plans, including the information shared with you on November 10, 2020, by Bill Sanford, Senior Vice President and Chief Operating Officer at RDU, concerning the consequences of residential units within the AOD. We believe the facts Mr. Sanford presented should be more than enough evidence that the proposed updates to the town's land use plan would be an unwise and irresponsible policy decision for the town of Morrisville, its residents, and the Triangle as a whole. The existing AOD has brought nearly thirty years of collaboration between RDU AA and the town of Morrisville, and we are disappointed to witness the changing dynamic. The proposed amendment to the town's land use plan would only backtrack the productive shared efforts by RDU AA and the town of Morrisville to benefit the greater community. The changes under consideration could expose RDU AA, the town of Morrisville, and Lake County to future legal and financial risk, as well as overall community backlash. Causes for collective concern include, but are not limited to, permitting residential properties in most heavily noise-impacted areas of Morrisville, and potentially exposing residents to high noise levels and frequent overflights, the impact of single-event noise on health and quality of life, the multifamily residential facilities propose unfairly accommodate individuals living in affordable and workforce housing, dissolving the purpose of the existing AOD may inhibit RDU AA's ability to meet the community's needs. RDU has been a good neighbor to Morrisville, working to responsibly balance the demand for increased air service with the concerns of surrounding communities. We have seen the result of the airports, the airports' noise-abatement efforts with the concerns of surrounding communities. I apologize, we have seen the results of the airports' noise-abatement efforts, including the AOD, and we would hate to see a thirty-year successful collaboration abandoned, especially when it runs counter to the best interests of the community at large, and there are other opportunities for development in this area consistent with currently approved zoning. We are at the three-minute time limit, and there was one paragraph remaining. The third public comment, from Tommy L. Dupree, 2600 Thousand Oaks Boulevard, Suite 2250. Over the past several weeks, the FAA Memphis Airport's District Office has responded with your office, has corresponded with your office concerning proposed land use changes for the town of Morrisville, and the potential impacts the proposed changes could have on the nearby Raleigh Durham International Airport. Specifically, the proposed changes are within the airport overlay areas, AO-A and AL-B. Initially, it was our understanding that the proposed changes would permit the development of multifamily housing in areas near one of the airport's arrival or departure corridors. While the potential development would be outside of the 65 day-night sound level, it would likely lead to noise concerns associated with single-event noise exposure. However, after discussing the proposed land use changes in detail with you and your staff on December 3, 2020, it appears that the proposed land use changes present less of a concern than initially anticipated. Based on information shared during this meeting, we believe the land use changes are consistent with FAA land use guidance near airports. In addition, we do not believe the land use changes will adversely affect airport operations or jeopardize FAA funding for future airport development. The next comment received is from Patrick Hannah, Acting Chair, RDU Airport Authority, 1000 Trade Drive, RDU Airport, North Carolina. The Honorable T.J. Colley and members of the Morrisville Town Council, as the town of Morrisville considers changes to its 2009 land use plan, I would like to reiterate the Raleigh Durham Airport Authority's deep concerns about a proposed amendment that would allow residential development within the current airport overlay district. Residential development within the AOD, and more specifically directly below the arrival and departure path to RDU's main runways, has been prohibited for nearly three decades because of the negative implications it would have on the authority, the town, and residents who live there. Lifting that prohibition would undermine the deliberate land use planning that has protected area residents from exposure to constant noise disturbances, and allowed the airport to support the region's growth. The collaboration between RDU and surrounding cities and towns has made the research Triangle Region a national model for compatible land use planning near airports, allowing all of us to grow and thrive. Throughout the planning process and in discussion with town leaders, the authority has raised repeated objections to allowing residential development, including proposed affordable and workforce housing within the AOD. Authority staff have educated the town about the backlash in public sentiment that would ensue, and the potential legal and financial exposure the amendment would create. The town has expressed that its decision to modify the AOD is based on the fact that according to the 2014 Noise Contours, noise exposure within the proposed residential development area is below 65 dB D N L. The Federal Aviation Administration established thresholds for significant noise exposure. However, an FAA study released earlier this month shows that annoyance due to aircraft noise has significantly increased in the decades since the government set that threshold, particularly in areas outside of the 65 dB D N L. Peter Kirsch, one of the nation's leading experts on airport noise and land use compatibility, detailed the FAA's findings in a recent letter to the authority. The letter reads in relevant part, the 65 dB D N L threshold was established in the early 1980s based upon a series of federal and academic studies going back to the 1970s, assessing the percentage of people highly annoyed by aircraft noise. The term "highly annoyed" is a term of art and acoustics designed to reflect the portion of the population that is mostly adversely affected by the noise. FAA has used the term "highly annoyed" as equivalent to the population for which there are significant adverse effects that must be analyzed under federal environmental law. Although the 65 dB D N L contour was established at the time as a convenient line for FAA to, to use to make funding and other policy decisions. I have reached the three-minute time limit for this item, attached to the item was a letter from, that they referenced from Peter Kirsch, which was included in the, in the comment packet received by council. The next comment, Steve Lauderdale, 2104 Glade Valley Lane. I ask that you not, repeat not, approve the land use plan as is. The land use plan is tainted by the PZB's disregard for infrastructure issues related to roads and schools. I am concerned that this town council will be responsible for making the school and traffic situations worse if you do not make changes to the land use plan. To be more specific, I am okay with the town center in transit-oriented development areas, however, I am opposed to the other upzoning or other classification. At previous town council meetings, there was discussion about explaining that medium density means neighboring like Kits Creek or Breckenridge. Unfortunately, that euphemism ignores the real issue. The issue is not the appearance of a neighborhood, the issue is the lack of The issue is the lack of infrastructure to support another neighborhood like Kits Creek or Breckenridge. Let me pause here to say, Money Magazine, if you are listening, the apartment boom and possibility of more apartments will hurt Morrisville's quality of life and turn us into a transient community. In other words, the PZB tainted land use plan will make Morrisville one of the top ten places that people leave. Again, Morrisville will lose its quality of life, and instead of a top place to live, Morrisville will become a top place to leave. Even with the recent school openings in our area, Wake County has twenty CAP schools. Three of the CAP schools are base schools for Morrisville. Seven other base schools for Morrisville are operating at over one hundred percent capacity. Please scale back the up classification, except for the town center and transit oriented development areas. The next comment is from F. Batista Orsino, Duke Realty, 2900 South Quincy Street, Suite 310, Arlington, Virginia, 22206. I am Batista Orsino, Vice President with Duke Realty Corporation, responsible for leasing and developing our three point two million, three point two million square feet of commercial real estate in the Raleigh Durham region. Almost seven hundred thousand square feet of that is in Morrisville at the addresses referenced below. We have owned property in Morrisville for more than twenty years and have worked hard to provide quality commercial real estate options to build a strong Morrisville economy. Our properties support the operations for eleven local and national businesses, such as the Triangle Badminton and Table Tennis, ADT, Time Warner, and Amazon. Our tenants have created more than eleven hundred jobs, helping to support local hotels, restaurants, and retailers. Under the town of Morrisville's proposed land use plan, the proposed future rezoning of the Perimeter Park Drive properties from industrial management to commercial would render all of Duke Realty's Perimeter Park properties highlighted below as non-conforming. The overall impact would result in a reduction of nearly fifty possible permitted uses that are permitted and typical for Duke Realty's property, limiting the type of businesses authorized in this area and ultimately substantially decreasing our property value. Further, this proposal reduces expansion and growth opportunities for current and future businesses, forcing our tenants to consider moving their businesses and their jobs from the area. In summary, the town of Morrisville's proposed land use plan amendment jeopardizes the region's potential growth and recovery opportunities and creates undue hardship for its existing businesses. Our request is that the ION zoning be left in place to continue to support quality and sustainable growth for Morrisville. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Next comment is from Sarah Leher. Hello, I wish to comment on the proposed zoning changes presented in the Morrisville Land Use Plan. I moved to Morrisville in 2005. We rented in one of the town's apartment communities, and we're happy, and we're so happy here, so we purchased a home a few years later. Our neighborhood dates to the late nineteen eighties and early nineteen nineties, and we are truly one of the only single family developments in this town that offers an affordable home on a decent sized lot with mature trees. In the fifteen years since we've moved here, we have seen Morrisville transformed from a quiet community defined mostly by its proximity to carry an RTP into a bustling and diverse suburb of its own. We continue to enjoy our lives in Morrisville, but I am concerned about both the pace and density of development in our town. There is not much land left within our town limits, and what remains appears to be destined to become more high density townhomes and apartments. I realize that the town is in an unfortunate position to be a desirable location, but I would also ask that you consider the impact of this continued land grab and rampant development to the quality of life of existing residents. Our roads continue to become increasingly choked with traffic. We are not building additional schools. Our environment continues to be damaged, and wildlife is forced out of its natural habitat. This is likely Morrisville's last chance to preserve some of this small town charm as opposed to becoming a treeless wasteland with minimal green space and unattractive cookie cutter developments designed with the only goal of maximizing the number of people that can be crammed into them. I plead with you to please consider the long-term damage this short-term economic boom will create. Would it not be preferable to build a community where those who live in our town's apartments might then choose to buy a home here if they are able, instead of moving to another town? To do this requires careful planning with an eye towards the future and an emphasis on providing residents with services and amenities they need and want in a community, not just a generic roof over their heads. Please don't continue to sell those of us who have chosen Morrisville as our home out to make a quick buck. Thank you for your time and consideration. The next comment is from Dustin Engelken, 7920 ACC Boulevard, Suite 220, Raleigh, North Carolina, and he is the Government Affairs Director for the Triangle Apartment Association. On behalf of the Triangle Apartment Association and our thousands of member businesses across the Triangle, I am pleased to comment this evening in strong support of the new Morrisville Land Use Plan and particularly in support of the new airport overlay district, which will allow for the construction of new multifamily housing northeast of NC 54. As you all know, Morrisville, like many communities across the country, is struggling to address the issue of housing affordability. A problem which is driven primarily by the lack of available housing inventory, which has resulted in ever increasing prices. As Morrisville and the Greater Triangle continues to grow and attracting residents, the pressure on existing housing stock is likely to intensify in the coming years, and prices will continue to rise. While the new land use plan is unlikely to solve this problem alone, the new overlay district will ensure the future development of apartment units, which can help to meet this need while providing a stabilizing effect on prices. We feel strongly that these changes will also complement the Affordable Housing Plan that was adopted in 2019, providing new opportunities for the town and the development community to work together on this issue in a key strategic area. The development of new housing is often controversial, and we recognize that high density development in particular has been an issue in the town in the past. The plan as written seeks to balance these concerns with the recognition of the important role multifamily housing plays in providing housing for your constituents. It is our hope that this plan, when adopted, will allay the concerns of existing residents worried about new development while also allowing for some new construction to occur in designated areas. This is a win-win for everyone in the community, and the town council should be commended for putting in the time and effort to develop this proposal and standing up to significant opposition from some quarters to find the right path for the town. As an organization, we look forward to continuing to engage with the council moving forward and being part of the solution on housing affordability. The next comment is from Jennifer Randolph. Good afternoon. I am writing to express my concerns about the land use plan. There is by far too much development in the land use plan, considering the grossly inadequate road and school infrastructure. In addition, Morrisville is exponentially losing its beauty and overall appeal as a community with the constant loss of trees and green space. It is heartbreaking to see every new area being clear cut for more and more housing. Please slow the growth. Residents are disgusted and disheartened. The next comment is from R. Scott Rawls, PhD, President, Wake Tech, 9101 Fayetteville Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. Town council members, it's my pleasure to assert that Wake Technical Community College supports the Morrisville Land Use Plan as depicted in the November twenty-third, 2020 draft. Wake Tech is particularly excited to support the Transit Oriented Development Subarea Plan because of the benefits it will provide students attending our Research Triangle Park campus. Wake Tech is North Carolina's largest community college, serving more than seventy thousand students annually, with six campuses, three training centers, multiple community sites, and a comprehensive array of online learning options. More locally, Morrisville's RTP campus is programmed to be a next generation learning environment dedicated to the needs of individuals and corporations in Lake County and the Research Triangle Park. Aside from our involvement in the land use plan's technical advisory committee, town staff recently provided us with a detailed presentation focused on the community's vision for a vibrant, mixed-use, transit-oriented development adjacent to Wake Tech's RTP campus. We believe this type of development is highly compatible with our desire to create a unique learning environment complemented by nearby amenities and accessible transit options. We look forward to continued cooperation with the town as this vision is brought to fruition and an important regional transit hub is developed. The next comment is from Ed White, 8320 Society Place, Raleigh, North Carolina. My name is Ed White. I own Field to Base Incorporated that is located at 101 J Morris Commons Lane, Morrisville, North Carolina. I am not a resident of Morrisville, but have been very involved as a landowner and developer going back more than thirty-five years, including the development of Town Hall Commons. Please accept this letter on behalf of the property owners of approximately three hundred and sixty-four acres of land located in the New McCrimmon Parkway Extension Corridor in Morrisville. Collectively, we own, or have owned and developed, over one thousand acres in the town of Morrisville since nineteen sixty-nine. The McCrimmon Extension area has, for the most part, been landlocked until the McCrimmon Parkway Extension opened in 2019. As a refresher, we came together as a group and donated the land necessary to create the right of way for the new road. We've held our properties in that area with the goal of self-developing or selling for development, but the intrinsic value of the properties was locked up until users or buyers could see tangible proof of the road that would be built. After years of waiting for the road to finally come to fruition, the light at the end of the proverbial tunnel was turned off as the land use plan update left interested parties uncertain of the future. Several of us had purchase contracts that fell apart when buyers learned that their proposed uses under the current industrial management zoning wouldn't be supported in the new land use plan. Others who hoped to self-develop have had years of planning come to an abrupt halt while wrestling with how to recoup expenses spent on proposed development nullified by the proposed new plan. The contract execution for the McCrimmon Extension was the trigger for any of these scenarios to move forward. Given a typical twenty-four month delivery cycle, starting with the submittal of a site plan to delivery of the building, it's important to note that the town could be enjoying its first year of property taxes on developed improvements for several of these properties. We are fast approaching the third year of uncertainty due to the land use plan, which, when coupled with the twenty-four month delivery cycle above, leads to a five-year delay on the town's economic benefits of development along this corridor. Collectively, we are in agreement with the shift to business activity center for the land use plan, but we implore the council to make the amendment of the airport overlay a prerequisite, or at very least a concurrent issue. Without the amendment of the airport overlay from AO-A to AO-B, with no exclusions on uses, the BAC zoning will not truly be a mixed-use activity center. And we have reached the three minute time limit for this comment. The next comment received is from Veronica Bradley, Director of Environmental Affairs for Airlines for America, and Nancy N. Young, Vice President of Environmental Affairs for Airlines for America. The comment reads, Dear members of Morrisville Town Council, Airlines for America appreciates the opportunity to comment in opposition to a recently proposed amendment to the town's land use plan for and request to rezone the property at 1001 Airport Boulevard. Airlines for America is the principal trade and service organization of the US airline industry and member airlines. As responsible members of the communities we serve, US airlines continuously deploy newer and quieter aircraft technology and implement noise abatement operational procedures to minimize noise impact on communities surrounding airports. Indeed, US airlines have played a critical role in the tremendous reductions in aircraft noise exposure achieved in the United States to date, reducing the number of people exposed to significant level of aircraft noise in the United States by ninety-four percent since nineteen seventy-five, while more than quadrupling in plainness. But this commitment to reduce noise impact cannot solely be borne by the airlines. All relevant stakeholders must use their respective authority to achieve meaningful, lasting land use noise compatibility between an airport and its neighbors. As such, we respectfully request the town decline to approve proposed CPA-2020 and RES 336-2020 to prevent residential encroachment on the RDU and maintain the airport's and community's reputation for successfully promoting noise compatible land uses. Both the Federal Aviation Administration in the United States and the United Nations International Civil Aviation Organization recognize the importance of thoughtful planning to achieve meaningful, lasting land use noise compatibility. These agencies, policies, and guidelines underscore the need for balance between airports and their neighbors and that achieving land use noise compatibility requires collaboration by airport proprietors, airport operators, and local zoning authorities, with each playing a role to minimize noise exposure to the surrounding communities. In fact, airlines serving RDU, the RDU Airport Authority, and surrounding communities have come together before to uphold a just balance between the airport and its neighbors. In the face of mounting noise complaints and litigation during the nineteen eighties and early nineteen nineties, these stakeholders came together to adopt practices, a noise rule, and overlay districts that resulted in shared responsibilities and obligations to achieve land use noise compatibility. RDU's airlines remain committed to successfully balancing stakeholders' needs, stakeholders' needs, but we cannot do it alone. The town of Morrisville must do its part to prevent encroachment of residential development on the airport. And we have reached the three minute time limit for that comment. The next comment is from Tracy Montross, Regional Director, Government Affairs for American Airlines. The address is 2400 John Brantley Boulevard, Morrisville, North Carolina, 27560. Dear Honorable Council Members, I write on behalf of American Airlines to express our concern to the town of Morrisville's proposal to authorize multifamily residential development in areas within the Raleigh Durham International Airport's existing airport overlay district. The proposed changes to the AOD make it inevitable that future residents will be exposed to significant aircraft noise defined by the FAA's sixty-five decibel day-night level, leading to sustained noise complaints that cannot be mitigated without constraining operations or jeopardizing future growth at RDU Airport. American is proud of its presence in the Triangle Region, where we generate more than eight hundred and ninety-eight million in annual economic impact, employ approximately four hundred team members, and prior to COVID-19, operate more than seventeen thousand departures annually from Raleigh Durham International Airport. American cares deeply about the communities we serve and where our team members reside, and we are committed to safely reducing the effects and exposure of aircraft noise whenever possible. American recently completed a comprehensive fleet renewal and simplification effort of flipping us with the youngest, quietest, and most fuel-efficient fleet. of flipping us with the youngest, quietest, and most fuel-efficient fleet among U.S. industry peers. Since 2013, we have taken delivery of 550 new, quieter, and more fuel-efficient aircraft at a cost of $23 billion. Over the same period, American retired a similar number of older, noisier, and less fuel-efficient planes. American continues to invest in new technologies, fleet modifications, and state-of-the-art navigation capabilities in order to minimize the impact of aircraft noise on communities. American also works closely with the Federal Aviation Administration, airports, and a number of community noise roundtables to find reasonable solutions for airspace modifications and departure procedures when available. Throughout this engagement, it is clear there are many communities that now regret not having better balanced the needs for planned growth with protecting compatible land uses around the airport. The town of Mooresville has for decades managed those activities effectively and pragmatically. It has ensured residential areas, schools, and churches have been located away from airports. We urge the council to continue that long track record of compatible land use zoning and avoid the noise issues and grievances that will arise by locating residential areas away from the RDU Airport Overlay District. Thank you in advance for your consideration of these comments. The next comment is from Kathy Sales, Kits Creek HOA Board President, on behalf of five members and their community. She is a resident at 1209 Summers Drive, Town of Mooresville. Dear Mooresville Town Council and staff, in 2019, 53 of us came to a council meeting, united in our request that the land around Kits Creek remain BLDR and that overall, we want Mooresville to plan to address overly congested roads and the need to conserve green space in the remaining areas where this is still possible as a priority over more development than already exists. Months ago, many of us wrote to you the same message. During the last town council election, we spoke with our votes to reduce the speed of development and conserve green spaces. Yet, the current land use plan seemingly disregards nearly all of those efforts. We have worked recently to get neighbors to write individual emails or web portal comments, and again, as I told you in a previous email, they are unwilling to keep doing that, only to be ignored again and again. They ask, "How many times do we have to say it? Can our HOA, 845 homes strong, speak up?" Maybe that will get their attention. And if not, then we must vote again to replace the people not listening. So on behalf of this neighborhood, our Board of Directors request that this land use plan not be approved until it actually reflects the efforts of our citizens to get you to hear us. We oppose any zoning up classification of any areas in this plan outside of the town center and request that this plan be amended to reflect the wishes of its citizens. The next comment is from Rob Griffin, Associate Director of Development and Land, Tri Properties, 5425 Page Row, Suite 100, Durham, North Carolina. Please accept this email on behalf of Mooresville Properties LLC in regards to tonight's public hearing on the land use plan update. He states that he is a representative for Mooresville Properties LLC, the owner of 75 undeveloped acres on McCrimmon Parkway for the past six years. The proposed shift away from industrial management zoning to business activity center zoning in the current land use plan draft translates into a reduction of nearly 50 possible permitted uses for Mooresville Properties LLC and other owners of IM Properties in the McCrimmon Extension area. Given that Mooresville Properties LLC and some other property owners are marketing their sites for sale, they want to retain as many permitted uses as possible for marketing the properties. However, that will not be possible under the council's current proposal. As stated in a more detailed letter Mooresville Properties submitted in October of last year, if BAC zoning is voted into place without amending the airport overlay concurrently to have no exclusions, it will potentially result in a future reduction of an additional 10 to 12 possible permitted uses if the overlay is not amended. We encourage the council to move forward with the overlay amendment concurrent with this land use plan update so that property owners along this corridor will know exactly what they will be left with at the end of the day. If the council is unwilling to tie the two together and amend the airport overlay at the same time as the land use plan update, we suggest considering the area be left as IM zoning rather than continuing to leave these property owners in limbo. Thank you. The next comment is from Kathy Milton. Mooresville Town Council, I have been a resident of Mooresville for the past seven years. I built a home in Kits Creek in 2014 and continue to live there. I'm very concerned by the explosive growth of apartment buildings and condos that have been built and continue being built in Mooresville. Traffic is horrible in our own town. My 3.1-mile commute to work can take 30 minutes during rush hour traffic pre-pandemic, yet we continue to build housing that our infrastructure simply can't support. Our community needs more schools in our town, more greenways and green space, and less housing development. We are at risk of losing our small-town charisma, and the traffic situation must be addressed now. Thank you and best regards. The next comment is from Mark Dixon, 1413 Everett Fields Road, Mooresville, North Carolina. Hello, Town Council. In reading through the land use plan, I understand that a lot of work went into this document over the last several years. I appreciate the time and effort and community engagement. I do, however, have some concerns. In a high-level view of this plan, I see a predominantly high-density housing plan. It is not in one place, it is everywhere. I am concerned that the addition of so much high-density housing will have a negative effect on everyone. Is the vision of this plan to just add more people? The three main areas for development, TOD East, Town Center, and McCrimmon Extension, are nowhere near each other, but they all incorporate high-density housing. On the topic of TOD East, there are questions that I don't think have been answered. Therefore, that development should not be proposed until there is a plan for using it. For persons living at the transit center, where can they go? RTP should not be proposed... I apologize. For the persons living at the transit center, where can they go? RTP was not designed with large sprawling campuses, so not many people can get to work via train. The last mile question is not answered, and Church Street will need to be widened to accommodate the traffic. The train doesn't seem to go to the airport. The next stop south is in downtown Cary. I cannot see high ridership out of this development, so it really needs to be reevaluated. I'd like the town center to be focused more on amenities, not housing. With all of the tech-oriented people here, including children growing up seeing this happen around them, I continue to propose a place to cultivate entrepreneurs. Serious question, how many meeting rooms does Mooresville have with the 30,000 residents? I'd like to see other creative amenities added to that valuable land. If the plan moves forward with a steady influx of people, that will include children. I am concerned that Wake County Public School System will manage the additional students by making choices that no one will like. Lastly, as I witnessed in the last PZB meeting, developers will look at the land use plan and consider every NAC, BAC, and RAC to equal high-density housing. Is that what you want? Mooresville has not yet prepared the infrastructure to accommodate this kind of plan. I truly hope that the town council is listening to the residents. You ask for my input, and so I hope is received seriously. The next comment is from Matthew Stevens of Stevens Enterprises LLC, 319 Chappano Road, Suite 102, Raleigh, North Carolina. Dear Council Members, my family has owned property on Airport Boulevard since 1997. We have added to those holdings and now represent approximately 120 acres within the McCrimmon Small Area Plan. We have seen substantial growth in the area and would like to see that continue. That is why we agreed to donate a portion of our land for the construction of the McCrimmon Parkway Extension. We have been involved and supportive of the land use amendment process over the last few years. It is very exciting to see this process getting close to the finish line. We support the future land use and zoning change to business activity center from industrial management. However, I do hope that the airport overlay district is also changed to allow residential uses. Without the airport overlay change, I believe the land uses available to us are limited and would significantly harm the value of our properties. The availability of residential and multifamily uses is critical to the success of the business activity center zoning. Without that, I would encourage you to keep the current industrial management zoning intact. Thank you for your time. The next comment is from Donna Constandy, 2108 Glade Valley Land. I ask that you not approve the land use plan as it is currently drafted. That land use plan doesn't contain enough for infrastructure issues related to roads and schools. I am concerned that this town council will be responsible for making the school and traffic situations worse if you do not make changes to the land use plan. The number of apartments due to the reclassification or upzoning in current draft will hurt Mooresville's quality of life and turn us into a transient community. While traffic is down in 2020 due to the pandemic, prior to lockdowns, the number-one complaint of residents has been too many cars and not enough roads. We need to be planning to build increased infrastructure and connectivity to the roads and schools we currently have and not to cram as many people into each acre as possible, creating even more traffic. Even with recent school openings in our area, Wake County has 20 CAPS schools. Three of the CAPS schools are base schools for Mooresville residents. Seven other base schools for Mooresville are operating at over 100% capacity. We still have more and more people moving to our little town. We need to think forward, look at the current lack of capacity, and work with the Wake County Public School System to increase school access and proximity for residents. The current situation is not tenable. Lack of calendar options, always concerned, will become even more challenging if we move forward with the current plan as is. Thank you for your time. The next comment is from John F. Holmes Jr. of JT Hobby &amp; Son Incorporated, 515 North Blunt Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. Dear Town of Mooresville Planning and Zoning Staff, I write you today on behalf of the owners of Cedarport Business Park LLC. While we support the land use plan change to business activity center in the McCrimmon Parkway subarea, we strongly encourage the condition that the airport overlay amendment is included within this change. The change from industrial management zoning to BAC prohibits approximately 50 potential uses currently permitted and will negatively impact the current property owners. Our group has been an active part of the development community in Mooresville for over 60 years, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with the town as it continues to grow. The next comment is from Stephanie Reed, 1672 Legendary Land, Town of Mooresville. I would really like you all to be careful with your decisions in deciding this land use plan. I am not opposed to development, but I haven't seen much improvement in the services since I moved here in 2006. The town of Mooresville has done a poor job explaining to citizens how upzoning all this land will benefit the citizens of Mooresville. To be honest, if this land use passes, I'm not sure if I will support the bond being proposed in the fall election. I want to get some benefits out of my tax money. There is very little bus service, no adult education classes. The parks are about the same size as when I moved here, albeit some have been upgraded or renovated. I'm thrilled with the new aquatic center, but I haven't been able to use it due to the pandemic. I also found the services that do exist are too competitive to get a spot, such as swimming lessons and the summer camp. But for my daughter, we looked outside of Mooresville or did it within our neighborhood. I remember I got a spot for swimming lessons for my daughter in Mooresville, but had to wait outdoors at the registration site at 6:00 a.m. I did that once and decided to take her to Triangle Aquatic Center for lessons because it was easier to register. She did most of her camps in Raleigh. She did her summer swim team in the neighborhood. I remember when I wanted to sign my daughter for the town softball program, it got canceled by the time she was eligible to join. With any activity classes, we had to drive to Raleigh or Cary because they had a diverse selection of programs in sports, arts, education enhancements, et cetera. Thank you for giving me the time to present my views. The next comment is from Eric Heath. Hello, there is simply too much development in the land use plan for the inadequate road and school infrastructure. I also do not want more units to be squeezed in every acre around Kits Creek. Keep those areas as green space. The next comment is from Stuart McLeod, Mooresville Properties LLC. Honorable Town Council Members, my brother Franklin and I are among the owners of a tract of land within the Mooresville-McCrimmon Parkway Extension area. The land is held under Mooresville Properties LLC and the Cedarport Development. In order to assist with the McCrimmon Parkway Extension, built between Highway 54 and Evan Row, my family contributed approximately three acres to the town of Mooresville for this project. To get the valuable land, along with additional acreage contributed by our business partners in Mooresville Properties LLC, proved essential for funding and construction of the McCrimmon Parkway. The proposed change to the land use plan affecting our property could have a serious negative impact on the long-term value of this land. Moreover, and extremely important to council members, the town of Mooresville will likely experience loss in future tax revenue because of the potential reduction in the property value of our land. We support the land use plan change to business activity center as long as the airport overlay amendment happens at the same time. Otherwise, the change from the current industrial management zoning to BAC severely limits the potential uses of this property. Unless multifamily residential is available, you'll essentially remove the market for retail from these properties. I also recommend against requiring vertical mixed-use and structured parking in this area. This would put a very large financial burden on all projects, making many of them unfeasible for development or turn into major delays and expense to seek variances from these requirements. These requirements should be left for developers who see the need based on market, density, cost, et cetera. I very much appreciate your consideration on these very important issues that have long-term implications for my family, my partners' families, and the town of Mooresville. The next comment is from John and Ashley Vermeerski, 6413 Kits Creek Road, Mooresville, North Carolina. I am a Cary, North Carolina native, but I have spent the last 14 years as a resident of the Kits Creek subdivision in Mooresville. To say I've seen growth in these areas is an understatement. After reviewing the land use plan, I was surprised and disappointed of its trajectory. Have we learned nothing at the town? Mooresville has had huge growth with little to no improvement on basic infrastructure to our roads, traffic, and schools for lack thereof. With each new housing development or unnecessary mixed retail space, we continue to obliterate our green space and tree population. I've referenced Dr. Seuss's Delores many times with this council because it's true. We don't want to become the next Steezville, where they have no trees, green space, and so clean bottled air. Generally, I believe our residents are in favor of healthy community development and growth, although we are growing... although we are growing a little faster than we would personally like. Morrisville is a conscientious community. We should all feel some sort of responsibility and accountability to do our part. Let's do better with the land use plan. It should not move forward as is. Thank you for your time and consideration. The next comment is from Joe Malazo, Executive Director of the RTA. 800 South Salisbury Street, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27601. Dear Regional Partners, the RTA Business Coalition appreciates and commends the ongoing conversation between the RDUAA and the Town of Morrisville concerning potential changes to the town's comprehensive land use map within the Airport Overlay District areas. The RTA recognizes and supports the legitimate strategic interest of our regional partners. The town's goal of an increasingly vibrant, resilient community by allowing attractive, higher-density uses near emergency transportation, educational institutions, and other infrastructure. The airport's goal of minimizing future risk costs and potential public opposition associated with the maintaining and expanding air travel operations and facilities to support the region's success. But RTA also acknowledges that such goals can be in conflict. While RTA is not advocating on a specific position on how to resolve such potential conflicts, our RTA Task Force on RDA Airport Infrastructure Development offers the following observations. We recognize that the scope of land uses developed near airports has expanded nationally, including Aerotropolis Development Areas such as College Park, Georgia, and Denver, Colorado. We believe that Morrisville's proposed changes are well-considered, consistent with the popular live-work-play, mixed-use areas, and align with ridership goals for multimodal transportation. We share RDU's concerns about allowing residential development beneath arrival and departure flight paths to the extent that aircraft noise is deemed incompatible with appropriate ambient noise levels within residential dwellings, especially single-family dwellings. We acknowledge the uncertainty of future aviation needs and requirements, and we would not want future residential real estate development or the objections of those living in there to limit the necessary alterations and expansion of the airports that benefit our region. We appreciate the town's significant existing efforts and proposed measures and practices to accommodate the future and current needs of the airport and the region. If the town ultimately believes that the benefits of allowing residential options in newly mixed-use development in the Airport Overlay areas outweigh future concerns to both the town and the airport, then the RTA Task Force strongly suggests consideration of several potential actions listed on the following page. We hope these observations and suggestions are helpful. We recognize that these decisions are challenging and that any development success in the vicinity of an international airport will require careful planning, strong collaboration, effective ordinances, and ongoing transparency. And we have reached a three-minute time limit for this time. The final public comment is from Peter Pritchard, resident of Morrisville at 119 Holly Creek Road. Dear Council Members, the proposed plan for Holly Creek ignores the desire for a uniform designation which would allow maximum flexibility and encourage an attractive integrated development similar to that which already exists along Davis Drive, specifically across Davis and the Twin Lakes Development. In fact, the plan cars up the street into three different designations: General Business, Activity Center, and Residential. That's a dramatic and artificial step-down of density, very unlike similar developments like Grace Park within Morrisville that are located just as close to a critical transportation corridor. The consultant's original designation and the first draft of the land use plan persisted. The views of the majority of the residents of Holly Creek were essentially ignored. Indeed, it seemed that more attention was paid to having some generous transition to Cary's development than to Holly Creek's residents. The change in the areas surrounding Holly Creek has accelerated and will continue to do so. Just since the time of the first LUP draft, Wedmans and other businesses have opened, big apartments have been built across the street, moderate high-density development has started adjacent to Holly Creek to the south, more than 300 homes, including three-story townhomes, abut Holly Creek to the west. Talk continues about a sheet gas station to the north, and an office building has been approved on Holly Creek itself. It's unrealistic to think that the street will remain the same. The LUP should proactively encourage an attractive, multi-use development that's aligned with current and pending adjacent density. Thank you for your consideration. And that represents the totality of public hearing comments received.
Okay, thank you very much, Town Clerk Smith. That was a lot. We really appreciate you putting those together, getting those in front of us in advance of the meeting. There's lots of other attachments that we'll be going through as a group, individually, over the next couple of weeks. At this time, I'd like to hold the question of closing the public hearing until after we have the opportunity to have some discussion as a group. At this time, I'm looking for the chat to see if there's any discussion or suggestions about what we can do to amend the plan at this point in order to be more responsive to the many concerns that our residents have stated tonight and in the many comments through the web portal throughout the process. I'd like to recognize Mayor Pratim Johnson? Oh, just a second. Trying to make sure I'm getting them in order.
No, Councilmember Fender.
Fender, I see the question.
Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, I see that. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please.
I have a couple of questions from the letters that were submitted. One was from Duke Realty, and they're saying their existing tenants or the properties would not conform under the reclassification from Industrial Management to Commercial. I just would like to hear from either Michelle or Brad, is that true? And will they be grandfathered in?
Yeah, and I actually happened to speak with that gentleman a couple hours before the meeting.
Okay. Brad, I think you froze.
Can anyone hear me?
I can now.
You can hear you now, but we missed the last couple of things.
A couple hours before the meeting, and you can't, if I'm disappearing, let me know. And just to clarify which parcels he was talking about, it turns out they were not in the McCrimmon Extension area. They were further towards Airport Boulevard. So that McCrimmon Extension area would not apply to his properties. He did not realize that at the time of the comment. However, he's working on drafting a new comment addressing the revised location that he's discussing. And I'm sorry if I cut.
I thought you were talking about Perimeter Park.
So I spoke with him directly, and he's talking about properties along, let's see. Just outside of, sort of near Triangle Badminton, Perimeter Park Drive. I think it's shown, I think there's commercial zoning there now, it's shown it's mostly office. He was wanting it to, the zone. He wants to revise his comment letter to indicate which specific parcels he's talking about, because there was a misunderstanding of which parcels were affected by the McCrimmon Extension area.
Okay. And then my second question was, you know, a lot of the letters from the RDU Airport Authority keep referencing workforce and affordable housing. Why do they keep? Do we, I mean, I haven't seen it. Do we mention workforce housing anywhere in our land use plan?
We mention, so they keep referencing both affordable, lower-income housing and workforce housing. Both are a little different. As you may recall from the 2019 Affordable Housing Plan discussions, workforce housing is really focusing on, you know, the 80% of area median income to around 100 or so. Maybe down to 60 in some cases. It really focuses on, you know, folks who are firefighters, police officers, office administrators, nurses, those type of folks, teachers. Federally subsidized low-income housing.
Brad, you're frozen again.
Can you hear me now?
I can't.
Yeah, federally subsidized low-income housing was the last words we heard.
Yeah, so one's workforce housing, which is more aimed at 80 to 100%. The other is lower-income federally subsidized houses, which is below 40%, 30%, so on. So we are not recommending any of the federally subsidized housing. We're only looking at potential workforce housing, although we have not specified any specific amount.
So we have language in the land use plan for that area around McCrimmon Extension that references workforce housing?
We do. It's, and I'm just trying to move my laptop so the signal's better. We do, it's in the sub-area plans.
Okay.
For the McCrimmon Extension area in TOD. But again, it's not anything specific. It's more exploring the possibility of that. As we see there's a benefit to the savings of transit and the opportunities those present to folks making.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please, followed by Mayor Pratim.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to maybe add on to what Councilmember Fender said about affordable housing. We have been pursuing a policy development over the last couple of years on affordable housing, a formal policy. We've been entertaining projects that do incorporate affordable housing. So that is something that Morrisville is attempting to add more affordable housing products in the mix. It's not easy at all. There is a struggle with these projects because in order to be affordable, they typically require higher-density products. That's higher-density apartments or townhomes or single-family homes are very difficult to get affordable, especially with the land prices in the Town of Morrisville. And we really are targeting that workforce population, our teachers, our first responders, and so forth, so that they can live and serve in the same community. So I do really would like to continue to see affordable options in the TOD East and the TOD West. I think having housing near transit is very positive and it allows people to have more mobility. With that said, I'd also like to say I really appreciate everyone, all the organizations and the individuals that gave us comments tonight because it is a very difficult, you know, challenge to make everybody happy. And in fact, it's impossible. But we have to, as a council, identify the best balance that we can. And your feedback is very important to us. And I would like to just say, probably the first person to say it tonight is, I would like to see this public hearing extended because I really value the feedback that we've had tonight. And I believe there's probably more out there that we could receive at the next meeting. So that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pratim Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati.
So I've got a couple of things, and I've got a question for Brad. But I'll start where Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson just ended. And I too would like to see this public hearing extended on these really big projects that we work on, these big planning processes that we have, like the land use plan, the transportation plan. We typically keep the public hearing open on more than one evening. I think considering the, kind of the work environment we're in right now, that's probably even more important. As it is now, we will have the public hearing open for a bare minimum until tomorrow at midnight. So there's potential to get some more feedback. And then, of course, I would like to keep it open to give folks opportunity to weigh in. I also do want to thank everyone who has weighed in so far. Your feedback is critically important. And I've made notes to go back at, to go back to, related to the different issues that came up between, you know, transportation, infrastructure, to green space and tree preservation, to high-density, to don't develop at all, which I actually, and I hope I wrote this down, the way that there was a resident, a Morrisville resident, who had a really great line. Of course, all our residents had really good, important information to share. But one of our residents said that they believe that the residents are in favor of healthy community development and growth, although we're growing at a little faster pace than we would personally like. And it was, that may not be word for word, but I think that captured it. I think we all, all, and I believe all of us on this council and staff, want healthy community development. I mean, you know, we want to see this growth be healthy for those residents that are here with us today and for the future residents. You know, I was a part of the land use plan back in 2009, and I will tell you, for me, that resonated back then and it resonates today. I thought really long and hard back in 2009 on the work we were doing then with the residents we had in town then. But knowing that we would have future residents, I mean, look, on council, we have residents that weren't here back in 2009. I was thinking of you when we were developing that plan and hoping to do the best to create a healthy community development and growth plan. So that's really important. And I think, again, I'd like to keep the hearing open a little bit longer. I appreciate all the comments so far. I will say, we heard some conflicting input tonight, too. You know, from, "We don't want any more high-density at all," to some people saying it was okay in the town center and TOD. So, you know, we have a job ahead of us as a council to try to weigh all this and to balance all this. And I do agree with Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson. You know, obviously, we're not going to make everybody happy because we heard competing input tonight. We heard different needs and desires. So we, as a council, need to do our very best. And I think this is really important, that we are listening. We are all listening. Listening doesn't always mean, you know, we'll be agreeing or that we will come to the same conclusion or solution, but we are listening and incorporating everybody's thoughts and desires as absolutely best we can. So that's really important for folks to hear, I think. Listening is really important, and we are hearing everyone. So that's my comment so far. And I do have a quick question for Brad if he hasn't dropped off. Hopefully, he's still with us.
I'm still here, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Brad, earlier on during your presentation, you talked about how you were not as a sta- and you know how I feel about this issue, about rezoning. I would, I am not in favor of- And you know how I feel about this issue, about rezoning. I would, I would, I, I am not in favor of rezoning, um, properties across the town. I, I'm, I'm in favor of folks coming forward, um, and asking for rezoning, um, moving forward on their properties. But earlier on, you said that staff is, um, can you elaborate on what you said about that? You talked about how you, you, some areas you were going to ask for council to consider rezoning. So if you could elaborate just slightly on that?
Sure, yeah. And, and so to elaborate on that, essentially, staff is recommending that any subsequent rezonings that happen immediately after land use plan adoption are really constrained to just the sub-areas. Um, we show a lot of potential, uh, for increases in allowable density in other places, and that's what that map is demonstrating. Uh, but we are, uh, recommending that you don't do a town-wide rezoning to follow through in a lot of those. We recommend, to your point, uh, that they sort of happen organically. As development comes in, you'll have the ability to negotiate what product type looks like, you know, the density, et cetera, you know, road infrastructure, uh, with developers, um, as, through, through the conditional zoning process. Um, so we, we encourage that route versus what we did maybe in two thousand fourteen with the UTO, where we just kind of did a, a blanket rezoning. Uh, but we do, you know, due to the, sort of the impending nature of development, um, near the TOD area, um, McCrimmon Extension area, and I know town center is, you know, maybe being handled as more of a plan development-type situation. But we, we are, uh, open to recommending, uh, zoning amendments there, um, due to, you know, they're under special circumstances. But overall, um, you know, for, to respond to some of the commenters tonight, we're worried about, you know, a VLDR or an LDR going to an MDR, whatever, you know, we're, we're not recommending that happen right after this plan.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. That, um, that's really important to me. I know that's important to, I, I, I'm sure all of us on, on council. Um, and, and I think for the, for the, for every, I was just going to say, for our residents, um, when, when these conditional rezonings come along and happen, there will be public notice and opportunity to weigh in on each and every one of them. Um, so we're, we are not, um, you know, with this plan, we are not predetermining, um, densities or product or anything on any property. Um, that, that is to come. And I, and I've said this before multiple times over many years now, um, I do believe rezonings here in the Morrisville will be more difficult. Um, some of them, uh, have, quite frankly, not even come all the way through to council or, or have been, um, folks have not, um, even, um, submitted the rezonings because, um, because of the, the feedback they have heard from council or because of the comments they hear. Um, and they know that, that, uh, their product, um, would be too dense or, or whatever and would not make it through. So, um, so those don't even come, um, to, to a place where, um, they're in front of the public and, and in front of council. But, um, you know, I, I've said these, um, it, it, these conditional rezonings are going to be important. These conditional rezonings are, um, are where council gets to, um, weigh in, where the public gets to weigh in. And, and that, I think, is, is appropriate for where we're headed into, in the future, that they, they should be more difficult and, um, and, and, and the development community should know we're demanding, um, more and better quality products. Um, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. So, um, those are my only comments right now, aside from the fact that I would like to extend the hearing. And I'm not looking to, um, to make any changes until we've received, um, you know, all comments. Um, and, and if we don't extend the hearing, that, that means through tomorrow at midnight, um, as it stands today. So those are my comments so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have two comments. The first is that it makes me very sad when citizens write in and they say that they don't feel like they're being heard. They don't feel like they're being listened to. They don't feel like their comments are being reflected in the new plan. Um, you know, I, I can only speak for myself, but I feel like, I feel like we are trying very hard to put together with, to help Brad put together a plan that is going to work for the residents. Um, and I think that we've continually pushed for, um, for development, for high-density development not to occur where there's already too much high-density development in Morrisville. I think that, um, I mean, we can't really put parkland on the, on the land use plan. We can't designate land that way. But I think that we've made abundantly clear our interest in preserving parkland and keeping Morrisville as green as possible, putting, you know, limiting clear-cutting wherever possible. I, so, you know, I, 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 I don't know if, if anyone has any insight on where this disconnect is occurring, but, but I feel very sad. And I, I would like to assure any citizens that are on the line or listening to the recording that we absolutely are listening to every piece of feedback that we get about the land use plan. I mean, I think that there, that there are places where we've down-zoned, um, areas that were, or not down-zoned, but we have not up-zoned areas that were originally scheduled for up-zoning. We've made modifications to the plan. And it's all been in response to resident feedback. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I, I think I speak for the entire council when I say we are completely open always to resident feedback. We are listening and we are interested in doing what's going to be the best thing for the people that already live here. Um, the other thing is that I, I do think, though, that, um, I, um, sorry, I'm just looking for the name in my notes. I think it was Steve Lauderdale that said that, um, we, that the roads and the schools have to catch up. We don't have a lot of control over development that occurs right next door to us. You know, if Kerry puts up a development in our backyard, we don't have control over that, but we, but it does affect us because it's more people on the roads, more people in the schools. And I do think that, I know that nothing that happens in a land use plan is going to significantly impact development in Morrisville tomorrow. But I do think that we have to figure out a way to, to control development while the roads and schools catch up. I mean, we are making some great headway on the roads. Um, I, schools are another thing we don't have a lot of control over, but I feel good about the relationships that we're building with the school board. But I, but I do think that that, that statement, which, and he's certainly not the only person to say that, but that is, that is a great point and one that I, I do think that we need to consider as every new development comes in, every type of new development, every new development, every housing development, every apartment building, uh, we really need to think about how that's affecting our roads, how it's affecting our schools, and the effect on the people that already live here. And I, you know, I, and I think, honestly, I think we do that, but I just want to say that again, that that, to me, is really a top consideration whenever we talk about. I, that's why I'm so resistant, frankly, to high-density development right now because I just feel like, like we can't support adequately, our infrastructure doesn't adequately support the people that are here now. That's nobody's fault, but, I mean, it's not a problem that this council can necessarily solve, but it is a problem. And I, I think that it's one that should never be too far from our minds. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ralph, for coming.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I want to thank all the citizens, um, for providing their feedback. And, um, I do want to just reiterate a constant theme that's been said, as, like Councilmember Robati and Mayor Pretem Johnson, that we are listening. And I think that, um, for anyone that thinks that we're not listening, I, I would just ask you to understand that we are and that our job as a board and a council is to not think about one neighborhood or one second, or section of town, but the entire town of Morrisville. And I, I've been doing my best to try to get in the mindset of analyzing why the citizens are so frustrated. And I think what they're afraid of is that if we did up-zone a certain area of town, that all of a sudden we'd open the pipeline of development and we'd get a lot of density and development that they don't want to have right now because we don't have the infrastructure. And so I think, for me, that's what I'm trying to figure out is, what can we do in the process to, um, ensure that, you know, whether, what are our options? Do we keep one section as low-density residential for a period of time and come back and revisit? Do we rezon it? You know, you know, that's, Brad, I think that's where I'm, I'm hearing different messages. And I think that's what, you know, people are, are concerned about. So we are addressing those concerns. Um, and I don't have an answer tonight. I want to, that's why I want to extend the public hearing. I talked to a lot of people across town that come from international cities, uh, you know, we, we, you know, from Mumbai to Chennai, and they're used to density. They want transit. They want walkability. These are people that come from international cities. And so I just want you all to know, from my perspective, the way I'm looking at it, uh, it does make my day that some of the citizens have said that they would like to see the density in areas like the town center or the transit area corridor. And, you know, today I was reading in the paper that, uh, John Kane has announced a one-billion-dollar innovation district in North Hills as the primary, um, and the primary motive is to have North Raleigh emerge as a destination of technology and life sciences. But, you know, and, and, and so I think we have to look at how competitive the market is right now for Morrisville. Not now, not two days later. I, I heard a comment about an election cycle. We're, we're not here, uh, worrying about the next election. This board and my colleagues are worried about the next ten to twenty to forty years. Liz Johnson has been on this council for twenty-four years, or twenty-plus years. And so I just want to also, you know, you know, clarify that point. So there's a healthy balance. And I think that, um, you know, people need a place to live and we have ten percent of all public companies in Morrisville. So I feel like, you know, if we let Raleigh or Kerry sort of go after that market, then that's so. I, I get, I continue to listen to these comments. I totally get it. I think we have to look at school capacity. We have to look at infrastructure and roads. And so I'm going to throw up to staff to say, you know, you don't have to answer me tonight. What are our options then? You know, do we vote as-is, the plan? And then people, you know, how do we slow down that process? So that people don't have this floodline of development coming in. And of course, we're going to do condis... But anyway, I just want to get both sides there, but we are listening. And, um, I know that my team or my council isn't here just to worry about the next year or the next election cycle. We're here to make decisions for what we want Morrisville to be in ten, fifteen, twenty years, so that we're the number-one city in America to live in and work on. So that's the way I look at it from the seat that I sit in. But thank you for your feedback.
Thank you for that. Um, I want to acknowledge that, uh, Councilmember Fender has a comment, but I haven't had a chance to, um, to weigh in yet. So I'll get back to her right after I ask a couple of questions. Um, so I want to ask Brad real quick. Uh, there is a question from, um, a group about the timing of the airport overlay and when that amendment might be adopted, uh, and the concern that it needs to be concurrent. Can you explain to us a little bit about what the plan is for the adoption of that item?
Of course, yeah. And if I drop off, Michelle can, um, substitute for me. But, uh, I'll give it a shot. So, uh, after land use plan adoption, um, as we mentioned at the October retreat, uh, we are intending as staff to bring for, um, some overlay, McCrimmon Extension overlay district language and potentially some overlay language for the TOD as sort of a quick, um, possibly temporary, um, establishment of some regulatory, um, considerations to ensure that future development happening in those locations with a special, you know, especially emphasizing TOD, uh, is compatible with that type of development. So what we're trying to avoid is a situation where, um, we have incompatible development occurring in the TOD and then it essentially, uh, is a done deal. And we don't have the ability to have TOD in that location and that would be potentially detrimental to the entire regional system. Um, so we've been, we're planning on having some quick, uh, language to apply to those areas. I think in regards to the specific comment that was made, um, each overlay district would have an underlying base zoning district. Um, so think of, uh, BAC as that underlying zoning district, which, and the uses associated with BAC. So, uh, if you look at the Futuraneuse map, you can see, or, sorry, Futuraneuse plan, you can, uh, see a description of what BAC is envisioned as. It's, it's similar to what we have now, but there's some key considerations that, that ask folks to, to examine. Um, so you have this underlying zoning and then on top of that, you'd overlay enhanced development standards like, you know, architectural landscaping standards, parking orientation standards. There's some discussion from you all about potentially requiring vertical mixed use for multifamily. Uh, we, we talked about structure parking. I, I don't think we're going to pursue a situation where we require structural parking, but, um, there are other considerations, block size, et cetera, that would be involved in that overlay. So things that you may not have regulated in regular BAC, you know, without an overlay, would potentially be applied with this, this overlay district. So it would be tailor-made for the McCrimmon Extension area. And we want to do something similar for TOD to ensure that we get, we don't get something super incompatible that disrupts the whole TOD, um, situation there. So they want to make sure that the two, the overlay and BAC, or whatever underlying district you guys end up wanting, um, are tied together.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Um, I want to comment, uh, for some clarity on your response to, uh, Mayor Pretem Johnson talking about staff recommendations about the zoning process, especially for the sub-areas. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially, the rezonings will happen upon developer initiative. Uh, we're not going to plan to rezone all of McCrimmon Subarea proactively, correct?
Um, McCrim, so the sub-areas, there's discussion about potentially proactively doing some zoning, just as I mentioned, an overlay and an underlying base district. Um, we would have a lot of prescriptive language in the, in that, as you would all review, to ensure that's what, you know, what kind of development you all want to see in that corridor. Same with TOD. None of this should really shock you because it'll basically be derived from the language in the land use plan. So if you're okay with TOD, you're okay with McCrimmon Extension, more or less, the language is going to reflect that. Now, for the areas outside, downtown is a kind of a special case where you might have a planned development with the developer. Um, but outside of those areas, uh, we are not recommending that you, uh, proactively go after certain parcels and zone them a certain way. We, we, we like to take the approach of it sort of organically happening. It gives you the most leverage through the conditional zoning process. As you know, we don't have any say, uh, with a lot of the design controls for single-family housing. Um, so conditional zoning is really the, the only way we can negotiate, um, certain design features, uh, road infrastructure, you know, landscaping, all that, all that stuff. And it's, it's, uh, you can get really into the details and know exactly what you're going to get, um, for a parcel. And those, those conditions are run with that land. So if they ever wanted to, uh, go back on those conditions, they'd have to come back for another rezoning. So we, we ask that you just, if you did adopt the Futuraneuse map, that you sort of leave the existing zoning in place where you can.
Okay, so I was just wondering why we would give up our leverage and those guardrails in those other areas as well. Um, so I guess that's a discussion that we could have.
Sure, so that's a great question. And so there is a lot of entitlement already there for industrial. So if we didn't proactively rezone, you would see a, a large flex-based facility where TOD should be. And you'd see, you know, potentially other industrial, potentially even heavy industrial uses along McCrimmon Parkway when that is not at all in alignment with the vision in this plan. So, uh, staff is recommending that you all proactively, uh, apply something there to prevent that. Otherwise, TOD is in jeopardy, um, McCrimmon, um, you know, the goals for walkable mixed-use development is in jeopardy. Um, fortunately, a lot of the landowners, uh, virtually all of them are in agreement that there's, you know, uh, horizontal mixed-use development is a good way to, to move away from industrial. Um, I think they're just wanting, uh, an end to all this. They want clarity and they want to be able to build something. And so, uh, they are in alignment with the vision of the plan. Um, so the good news is that any base district or overlay district that we bring to you after plan adoption, you will be able to tinker with. You will be able to look line item by line item. Is this the right block size? Is this the right building height limit? Is this the right, you know, spacing of multifamily? If we have a requirement that spaces multifamily five-hundred feet or something, you know, so they're not all bunched together, uh, we will let you review that and, and comment and, and tinker with that if you'd like. So it'll be all transparent and, and, uh, the public will have an opportunity to comment.
Okay. I think that's very important, uh, because our residents are very concerned about apartments, especially in the McCrimmon area. So I think that'll be important. Um, so, yeah. Um, so, yeah, the whole idea of the plan is to provide clarity to development community about where we're trying to head. So, I think that's gonna be important. Um, I'll go ahead and make sure that everyone has an opportunity to weigh in, and then we'll go around for a second round. I would also like to say that I think it's a good idea to extend the public hearing. At this time, um, I recognize Councilmember Garamella, and then Councilmember Robati, and then we'll circle back around to Councilmember Fender.
Uh, thanks, uh, Mayor. Brad, I think, uh, one thing I have not seen is, do we know in the airport overlay, like the McCrimmon Extension, is there any kind of a height restriction, uh, because, uh, of the airport runway? And same with TOD? Um, I have not seen height restrictions anywhere in Morrisville, but I just wanted to know if there are any height restrictions.
Yeah. So, uh, I think, um, any building that's, and Michelle can correct me if I'm wrong, any building over 50 feet has to be, uh, reviewed by the airport authority to ensure that it doesn't impede, um, airport operations. Uh, but that doesn't mean 50 feet is the, the limit. It just means...
So, 50 feet equals to what, like four floors, or?
Yeah, three, actually, probably more like three with the large lobby. But, that doesn't mean 50 feet would be the height. It just means that's what they review. I mean, I, I think we're, we've been cleared for buildings much taller than that. Uh, they just wanna ensure that anything near their flight path, um, is adequately reviewed. Um, and I, from my understanding from RDU is that the, the actual height ceiling that, um, scares them is, is much higher than, than 50 feet. Um, you know, we get cranes, uh, that are much taller than the buildings they're actually building. Um, you'll, you'll, you see them right now at Evans and Aviation. Um, those have been cleared. Um, it's just a matter of, of having RDU understand the, you know, approach zones and making sure there's no problems.
Okay. Um, uh, perfect. And I, I agree with everyone, like, you know, we should keep the public, uh, hearing open. And also, there are good comments from both sides, um, of, of the aisle. And, uh, I will go back and read them again because, uh, we just got it an hour before the meeting. Um, but, uh, thank Eric for reading through those whole comments, uh, and the ones which were not completed, I'll ensure that I read them again. Thanks.
And, and Member Garamella, I should, I should also mention, when you're reading those comments, to further clarify your, your concerns about the airport, um, the FAA and, and, uh, Eric did a great job reading through it, but the FAA did, um, clarify their stance on how it's the Lane Use Plan impedes on operations. And their stance is that it does not.
That sounds good. That is good info. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, that, that was a very strong letter. Um, I just wanna ask, uh, Councilmember Robati real quick. You indicated in chat that you're in favor of extending the public hearing, correct?
Correct. And that's the only, that's the only further comment that I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Fender with a comment, please.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. Um, first, I'm, I'm agree to, um, keep the public comment period open. Um, second, I just wanted to address, um, a couple of comments, uh, by other council members about how the residents are feeling and how they feel like they're not being heard. Um, I, I think I can speak to some of that because I've heard the comments, and they say it in their, um, emails, letters to the council. Um, you know, just like the developers along the McCrimmon Extension are concerned about what category, um, is designated for that area in the land use plan, um, and just like RDU is concerned about, um, the designations that, um, where the airport overlay will be, um, the residents are concerned that we are upzoning, um, a lot of the low development, um, low-density residential categories or areas to medium density. Um, we're, we're doing that to the area around Kits Creek. We're doing that to the area behind Breckenridge. Um, we're doing that to the parcels of land along Church Street where, um, I've heard numerous comments about the frustration of the townhomes that were just recently built along, um, Church Street. And now, we're designating more parcels of land, upzoning them from, um, low-density to medium-density, which allows townhomes. And yes, I know these categories are not zoned, but just like the developers are concerned about what, uh, the land use plan says about that land, the residents have a very valid concern that we are designating these areas as medium-density. And yes, I know that when developers come before the council and they can do, um, a rezoning request, one of the requirements is, is it consistent with the land use plan? And if they come forward and want townhomes, um, you know, they can say, yes, it's consistent with the land use plan. When the council approves this, they put medium-density in this area. Um, so, I think, you know, if we were really listening, we wouldn't be allowing medium-density residential in these areas. We would be keeping them low-density. Um, a num, a number of the comments were with regards to that. Um, and I think it's unfair to the public to expect them to keep watch of every single rezoning request, um, that comes before the council, um, and, and voice their concerns every single time a rezoning request, um, comes forward. They are announcing their intentions now. The land use plan is supposed to be a vision of how we see our future, and we are telling the residents that our vision is, we want townhomes and multifamily, um, apartments everywhere. It, it, and so, they are va, you know, they are, um, concerned, as, as, as I am. Um, I do, I don't think we're listening to the residents. They've been saying this for the past couple of years, and we are still allowing these areas to be designated, um, medium-density. And like, I will repeat this again. Yes, we do need some apartments in Morrisville, but Morrisville doesn't need to provide all of the apartments for RTP. We already have 62% of our residential units are townhomes and, um, apartments. We're already providing, um, majority of multifamily and townhome, uh, units in the town of Morrisville. Only 37% are single-family detached. And with this land use plan, what we're saying, our vision is, we'll only shrink that number and make it 20% single-family and 80% multifamily and townhome. So, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, a question from Councilmember Rao, followed by a comment, uh, proposal from me.
Um, just a question maybe that staff can answer for us. Um, in the interest of time, we won't have to get into a long discussion today, but that's, I think, uh, Councilmember Fender hit, hit some good points about certain areas of the town where there are concerns about more density, um, you know, so like, for example, I'd be curious as to the Holly Creek area, you know, playing devil's advocate. If we, the problem with NAC is that the citizens then get concerned that you're gonna see a lot of developments coming in with a higher density, even though I think we moved it to medium-density. So, how do you balance that? It's, you know, you know, because if we put applicants through the process and they start coming in and saying, well, it's in the land use plan, then we're gonna make the problem worse. But, I don't think we can keep a low-density forever. You know, what, what would be the advantage right now from a staff perspective of having it in NAC? Just refresh my memory. What, what, why would we want that?
So, I'll, I'll, so, some of the discussions we had in the Planning Zoning Board, um, at the stage of this plan process was, you know, there's so much surrounding development around Holly Creek that is NAC-esque, you know, higher-density type uses, higher-activity type uses. The Wegmans was cited, uh, the senior, uh, living facility across the street, um, other development that's creeping up, and the Cary side of, of, of things. Uh, and so, uh, the logic, from my understanding, or our staff's understanding, is that, uh, why single out this area for low-density residential, and literally everything around it is being, um, consumed by higher-intensity uses?
But, I think the concern of the citizens, and I, I'm fine with that, but I think the concern from the mindset is that, that all of a sudden, you're gonna see thousands and thousands of townhomes and multifamily. I think that is what the disconnect is. I think that's what I need to know. Where, how, how in the process can we control that?
That's great.
And address those concerns that I'm hearing right now. And that's where we gotta get to.
Yeah.
Because if we don't, then they're gonna feel like we're not listening.
Sure. Yeah. So, uh, great question, again, and, um, just the, right now, I think, if we're gonna single out Holly Creek Road, right now, that's zoned very low-density residential, so it's like an acre or less. Um, in a weird way, that gives you a lot of leverage because, uh, almost everything that's gonna be proposed is gonna require a rezoning. And so, uh, so when a developer comes in with a product, um, you will have a lot of say, a lot of control over what actually gets built there. And if it doesn't live up to your standards, if it doesn't align with the land use plan, um, you are under no obligation to approve that rezoning. Um, same goes for the parcel next to Kits Creek. I think that's zoned, uh, very low-density residential. So, the folks in Kits Creek who are concerned, uh, I've actually spoke with Kathy Sales a few times. She was part of our technical advisor committee at one point. Um, that, that does not, under any circumstance, need to be changed either. Um, I, I suspect if the developer comes there, uh, they will wanna upzone that as well. But, you will, again, have full say and control whether or not that occurs. If, let's say you all wanna maintain it as single-family detached housing only, no townhomes, we will allow development, but it's only gonna be single-family detached, you have full control and ability to do that. It is totally up to you. Same with Holly Creek. Same with the area by Breckenridge.
But, we wouldn't have, last question, I'm sorry. But, we wouldn't have that control of low-density? I mean, if it was, or, you know, we, how would we have more? That's what I'm trying to learn, is how would we have more control than in a scenario we kept it as-is?
So, and, and, it's, so, most development occurring in Morrisville over the next 10 to 20 years is almost guaranteed to be higher than very low-density or low-density. It's just the numbers aren't working for a lot of these developers, it, it's, so they claim. Um, so, chances are, from what we're hearing, is that they're going to always try to get at least a medium-density or a high-density to make the numbers work for the cost of the land. Now, that's not your problem to solve, but that's just something that they cite as an issue. And so, medium-density was sort of that, for lack of a better term, the happy medium that you all, uh, came to a consensus on, uh, in October as, hey, I think the comment was made, hey, most of Morrisville is medium-density. Um, it's not crazy to think in the next 10 to 20 years, these areas will probably also be medium-density. However, we wanna emphasize single-family detached, um, that medium-density residential and not townhomes. And so, we heard that loud and clear, and that's why with this new version, which I don't know if you all have had a chance to read, but we've highlighted the, the text, uh, talking about this, um, it is very clear that you all are preferring single-family detached from here on out, especially, um, so outside of the subareas, of course, especially, uh, west of NC 54. So, that covers places like the Kits Creek parcel, Breckenridge, Holly Creek Road. So, you have full justification now, if the developer comes and says, hey, I wanna put townhomes here, you can totally, with unequivocally, just deny that. You can say, nope, not interested. We already are clear about this. But, we, we say, we, we sit, we leave it, we leave a crack in the door in case someone comes in with a very unique, special project that you may have not thought of, or something that's developed in the next 10 to 20 years that we can't even envision. So, let's say, like, really nice brownstones or something like that, you know, like, the ones like behind Grace Park that everyone likes, and the ones, uh, behind, uh, the future downtown, um, Church Street Town that everyone appreciates. We leave a crack in the door just in case there's a small component of an overall larger single-family development, single-family detached development that you may wanna allow. Um, so, we, we don't wanna completely close the lid on that. Um, but, we do in the plan emphasize on seven different pages, you can see with the highlighted text there, uh, that single-family detached is the preferred housing type for the future of Morrisville, especially with west of 54, uh, for those remaining areas outside the subarea.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful.
Sure.
Okay. And to, um, kind of piggyback on that, um, leaving a crack in the door and text, that's different than a map. Um, so, if we could bring up the Attachment 6 map again. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, first off, I wanna thank staff, uh, for all the work done on the side of the date, and especially for preparing the new information slides, uh, that we show here. Um, so, this slide shows how the draft plan sends a clear message to the development community to bring us more density for more than 338 acres. So, this is directly in conflict with what we've been hearing from our residents about what they would like to see for Morrisville, other than some subareas. So, I believe that we can allow the Regional Activity Center and Neighborhood Activity Center designations noted on this map to be changed, as those adjustments, I don't think they'd be that detrimental. But, to acknowledge the stated concerns of our residents throughout this process and do all we can to preserve the quality of life here in Morrisville, I would ask now my fellow councilmembers to speak up if they have an issue with us directing staff to actually leave the colored parcels indicated on this slide as their current land use designations, as Councilmember Rao was kinda intimating, 'cause that really keeps the guardrails up and sends a clear message that if you bring us something that we really love, and it's medium-density, we can adjust the land use plan later. But, right now, what we're looking for is to control development, which is our responsibility, until we get a chance to catch up a little bit and assure our residents that we're doing all that we can to preserve, to preserve their quality of life. So, rather than changing them to allow the higher-medium-density residential or high-density residential. So, um, this is the one place outside of the subareas where we can really make a difference for the future of the town. So, since we're gonna keep the public hearing open for another couple of weeks till the next meeting, if we do that, it will give all parties a chance to react to that. And it keeps our guardrails where they are, 'cause right now, development is essentially running faster than we can keep up. And the land use plan, as drafted right here, lets them sprint. So, I think it's important that, um, at this time, if councilmembers have a problem with staff actually bringing us back the option of leaving them as they are outside the subareas, now would be a good time to speak up, 'cause I think that would be really responsive to the residents. And still give, uh, the development community the window that if they bring us something really great, we can adjust the land use plan up, we can give them the zoning they need to do something that we want, but it's not teasing them and showing, telling them that medium-density is gonna be fine. That's gonna essentially waste their time. So, um, TJ's proposal. So, if I could hear from people if they have a problem in chat, and then we'll circle back, 'cause Mayor Pretan had a comment, and Councilmember Robati had a comment as well.
So, my, when I, when I put my comment in there, it, it, um, it was more along the lines of what Councilmember Rao and, and Brad West just talked about. So, um, I, I appreciate that. Um, I, I think, you, I think before, um, council makes any changes, we need to either close the public hearing or, um, wait till the public hearing closes if we're gonna extend it to, two weeks. I, I think it, um, I think you're, you're, you, we need to be clear to the public with what is in front of them so they have something to react to. Um, you know, I would rather them react to what they're seeing now before we start making changes, because then, then you've gotta, then you've gotta ask folks to come back in again and, and weigh in again. So, I, I'm not in favor of making any changes until we've heard from all to the public hearings closed, um, and quite frankly, to, to even digest what you just said, TJ. Um, so, I, I, I think it's, um, I think we need to digest everything... So, I, I think it's, I think we need to digest everything we heard today and continue to hear until the public hearing closes. And then, the one, the other thing, I just wanna make sure, I, I just wanna be really clear here, there's a concern that we all have about this balance of, of the type of residential development we have here in town, this balance of single-family versus multifamily and townhouses. And, um, I, for one, have not heard anybody, anybody on this council say, we want exclusively all, more townhomes than multifamily homes everywhere. Nobody's saying that. If, if that's the impression folks are getting, then we need to get ahead of that, 'cause we don't want townhouses and multifamily houses everywhere. That, that's, that's not what we all discussed back on October 10th, for sure. So, um, so this balance of, uh, single-family versus multifamily, if you really and truly care about that, if you really and truly wanna make a difference and change that balance, then you need to have a plan that's realistic and gonna get you there. We just heard Brad say that a lot of, or almost all of, the single-family development in this town, not all, but almost all, is medium-density. And you also heard him say repeatedly that there's language in the land use plan that says that we're desiring single-family west of 54. So, if that's what we want, if that's what this council wants, then we have to adopt a plan that's gonna be realistic and help us get there. And I have heard repeatedly from the development community that, that very-low-density, single-family, these one-homes per acre, it's just not gonna happen. So, you're not gonna affect that balance that we all wanna see changed with single-family versus multifamily. I mean, I, I, for me, that's an important question, and, and that's an important vision to share with the development community, and to tell them that's what we want.
Okay. Um, so, you are not in favor of having staff bring that forth? Uh, Councilmember Robati?
I did not say that, I did not say that, please do not put words in my mouth. I started my comments by saying, I am not interested in making changes to this plan until we have closed the public hearing, till I've had the opportunity to really digest all the comments that we received, because we did not hear them all tonight. I think we need to all, we, we need to all think things through. I am just sharing with you some of the, the realistic concerns that I think we all should weigh and balance, like, we're gonna weigh and balance every piece of feedback we get from the residents of the town of Morrisville. And, and like I said earlier, some of the feedback we got is contradictory. We've heard people say they don't want any more development, we've heard people say they don't want anything, any more high-density, we've had people say, high-density is okay, but just over here. So, we have a lot to weigh and, and make decisions on. I'm telling you, I'm not prepared to make those decisions right here and now.
Okay, fair enough. We've heard a lot, and I was just putting forth a proposal that would give them something to react to. I know it's a bit chicken and egg, but waiting till public hearing comments are closed, and then introducing a change is contradictory to giving them an opportunity to speak on that. So, I think if there's ever a time to introduce options, it's during the public hearing being open. And to your point about the balance, if no more single-family is gonna ever be built, why would we choose to dig our hole deeper by making it easier to have other options that push 37 down even further? So, Councilmember Robati with a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think that when, I think that the entire plan, no matter what we do, is going to be a compromise. And if Brad, whose expertise I respect, tells me that super-low-density housing is not an option, and medium-density housing can be lovely and attractive, I, I haven't heard anybody say that we want apartment buildings and high-density residential and townhouses everywhere, nobody has said that. But I think that we can make room in this plan for attractive, single-family detached housing, which has been a, a goal of mine since we started talking about this plan. I think that medium-density gets us there, especially since, and, and we've clarified it every single step in the process, that when we designate something medium-density on a land use plan, we have a lot of control and a lot of guardrails, once we do that, over what can go there. So, I, I mean, I can understand why the public is alarmed when, you know, when they hear high-density residential everywhere. But Brad showed us a, a schematic in the beginning of this call that I thought was, was pretty attractive, and something that I would not be averse to having in Morrisville. So, I, I, TJ, I think, I'm sorry, that, that the idea that you proposed is, is the, the worst option, because that's going to give us, that's gonna give us high-density, very-low-density residential, if someone will build it, and then piecemeal in other stuff that people bring to us that might be attractive. I just think that's, you know, I just think that is, that is a bad idea. You know, I don't, I think we should say what we want, we should control what is gonna go there with zoning. Medium-density does allow townhomes, but if, Brad has repeatedly said that we can specify that we will not look at townhome projects. So, I mean, what, I don't understand what more we need to say, if we say that the, that, I mean, Brad, you correct me if I'm wrong, because if I'm wrong, I'm gonna change my mind. But if you're telling me that we can designate something on this land use plan, medium-density, and then zone it so that, so that a house like mine goes there on a quarter, a nice house on a quarter of an acre, detached from its neighbors, and then townhouses, townhouses can't go there, you tell me if that's wrong, because if that's wrong, I'm gonna change my mind, but for right now, I, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't see the problem.
Um, you are absolutely 100% accurate. And I can elaborate, but, yeah, so essentially-
I, no, so, no, I, I don't-
Dramatic calls there.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Brad, I don't need you to elaborate, I guess that I was just, I guess I was just thinking about, I wonder if maybe there's a, there's a disconnect in, maybe we haven't explained it well enough. You know, what, what can and can't happen as a result of the land use plan? You know, maybe, I don't, I don't know, but I, but I'm saying that I'm certainly not in favor of high-density residential everywhere, or anything like that. And I haven't heard anyone else say that they are either. We all wanna provide attractive, single-family detached houses in Morrisville, that's, that's been, I think that's been all of our goals. So, I, anyway, okay, I, I'm done, thank you, sorry.
Thank you. I, I think the rubber hits the road about when the rezoning request comes, to what extent they might ever be denied. I think we can count on one hand or less, the number of times that a rezoning, once it gets to that point where it's said no to. So, strictly, yes, theoretically, we still have all the control in the world, but if the developer puts in a lot of work, has already purchased the land, we have not shown, in past councils either, the political will to say no, and to redirect them at that point, 'cause it's so late in the process. Councilmember Scoggins-Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to reiterate that we have heard a lot of excellent feedback tonight, but we have not heard it all, because we were only limiting comments to three minutes, and we did not receive the full packet of information of the comments until an hour before the meeting, so I personally need to read everything and do my research and understand pros and cons and so forth. I'm not comfortable entertaining changes tonight to the land use plan, other than just kind of brainstorming, but I don't wanna direct staff to make changes tonight, 'cause I would like the public hearing extended as the proposed plan is tonight, so that we can collect more feedback on this plan. I think it'll help us gather, you know, more insights. So, changing anything right now I'm not comfortable with, and also about medium-density, medium-density can be done very well, it is not, I live in a medium-density neighborhood of single-family homes, and it, it's, it's quite lovely, I mean, they are kind of tight together, but we get to know each other so much better, I think, than if, in a low-density residential scheme would be. So, I, I'm comfortable with medium-density, and I'm, I'm willing to discuss further, but I'd like to leave the plan tonight as is, thank you.
Okay. So, I heard three people say that they're not comfortable with directing staff to do that. Seems like the option is now out there in the general knowledge, that, that could be something that could be considered. I think that, um, it sounds like the timing of closing our public hearing for presentation to the council is a little problematic, 'cause if we do it the same way again, and we go till 3:00 PM the day of, on the ninth, then we are once again in that same position, where if we get a lot of comments, we don't have a chance to process them. So, that would mean that at that point, we wouldn't be in a position to make any changes either, because we wouldn't have been able to process those public hearing comments. So, I'm open to ideas about how much time we actually need to process the public hearing comments in order to make any changes, or direct staff to explore any changes for our next iteration. Like, cutting off on Friday, so that we'd have those comments on Saturday? Let's say, let me ask staff, if, for example, we got the same amount of volume of comments, how long, how much time would you need to have that in our hands by Saturday close of business?
I'll let Michelle chime in on that one, that is probably a plan director caller.
And I'm actually gonna ask Town Clerk Smith for his thoughts on that, as he's the one that the comments are directed to, and that compiles and forwards those to you. I agree, some additional time at the staff level, we were really skimming those and trying to digest them right before the meeting as well.
Yes, sir, I may follow up. Compilation of the received comments typically takes around, I would say around an hour to, to an hour and a half to compile those received comments. So, they, they could be the undistributed, um, as you requested.
Okay, so, um, not to make you work late, but if you cut off the time for public comments to February 5th, which is a Friday, by 3:00 PM, you'd be able to compile them and get them to us by 5:00 PM on that Friday the 5th, in preparation for a Tuesday meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I see that there's a comment from Mayor Pretam-Johnson, and then we'll circle back on this as a possible path forward. Mayor Pretam-Johnson?
So, uh, you know, typically, well, I, I'm a little, I'm, I guess, well, let me back up, I'm stumbling over my words.
Let me be clear, real quick, I'm not saying that we're closing the public hearing at 3:00 PM, but in order for the comments to be processed by staff and digested by the council in preparation for the Tuesday. So, we'd still be receiving them, but I'm not sure, I think people would understand that, get them in by that Friday at 3:00, so that they're really heard, listened to, and digested in such a way that they can be useful to us. But please go ahead, Mayor Pretam.
Well, I, I was gonna say, typically, when we extend the public hearing, we extend it to the next council meeting, and folks have the opportunity to come before council, we publicly close the he, the, the meeting then, we have discussion, and then we, we certainly, I would, I would, I would not advise voting on it the same night, regard, you know, even if we had no comments, quite frankly. But, um, um, so I guess my question is, are we, a couple, this may influence my position, are we planning on meeting in person in February, or are we gonna be all virtual again in February? Because closing a public hearing virtually is different too, quite frankly. And that's actually a question for staff, who probably can't answer that.
So, so I'll jump in. We anticipate, the governor may speak tomorrow, we're sort of waiting to hear for that, to determine our recommendation for virtual or in-person meetings for February.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I guess, I think that there might be a structural flaw in the way we do things if we are not comfortable proposing changes, or putting stuff up the flagpole until a public hearing is closed. Because by doing that, you're saying that, okay, we've taken all the comments, and then you're locked in, if we're not gonna change it, how can we get feedback any, on any potential changes?
So, to be clear-
Yeah.
We haven't had the opportunity to even read all these comments, to be clear.
Right.
Because they were not, they, they, they were not all read to us tonight, and I, along with several of us, have not had the opportunity to read them, because we only got them right before the meeting. So, I mean, that, that's important piece of data here.
But still, I, I thought I understood you to say that you didn't wanna make any changes or decisions until we close the public hearing. So, that's, once again, chicken and egg. So, uh, Councilmember Scoggins-Johnson, please.
Okay, I, I have to, you know, weigh in a little bit about the process. So, when we typically have public comments or a public hearing, we, everybody comments on the same version of it. So, I'd like to see more comments in the same version. Once we have a new version, then people that have previously commented on the other version have the ability to comment on the new version. So, I would like to hear, you know, because if we keep changing and changing, it, it might be confusing a little bit. First of all, I'd like to read the comments, but I'd like this version to have all the comments possible, and, and carrying that comment period to the next meeting is really what we standardly do. So, could we do that while we're, you know, kind of absorbing, maybe? We can ask staff to give us what they have to date that Friday, so that we can look at it on Saturday, and then there would be less comments to review that following Tuesday.
That sounds like that'd be reasonable, I mean, I believe staff would give us comments up until, that were submitted up until 3:00 PM the day of, but for the public to know that the ones that really get digested and processed by the council should be submitted by 3:00 PM on Friday, sort of as part of our agenda packet, which we usually get before then anyway, but it would give us time to process that. So, I, I'd just like the, the public to know that- So I'd just like the public to know that there's the option of leaving non-sub areas as they're currently zoned, to keep those guardrails up. And I heard three people saying that that was something that they were not comfortable with, but I'm not gonna push to make that the option. I just wanna make it clear that that's an option that I would support moving forward. Okay. I was just noting, Erin Hudson noted in the chat that it's important to remember where the public hearing comments are submitted on a specific item at a specific time, as legally required by state statute. So I think by indicating, like we may, that Friday by 3:00 PM is a good time to submit them by, but they will still be accepted until the Tuesday at 3:00. For inclusion, and then we'll keep it open until at least the midnight after. Okay. We've been talking about this a lot. So I'm comfortable thinking that the public now knows that that would be an option. Not asking staff to create a new map, because the map that they created as Attachment 6 makes it very clear about what my proposal would be, which is that anything that's going from LDR or VLDR to MDR or to HDR from those colors, I would propose those don't get changed at all, in order to keep the maximum guardrails and set the expectation that we are really looking for single-family detached. Looking for other comments in the chat before we close down this item. On behalf of the entire council and staff, thank you, everyone who submitted comments. You have further opportunity to submit more comments, as noted, by Friday at 3:00 PM on the 5th. Those are the best possible comments, because council and staff will have a chance to really digest them before our meeting the following Tuesday for our discussions. But I believe that we will still do the same process from 9:00 to 3:00 on the day of for, as an inclusion as we could, but if there's a lot of those, we might actually end up postponing again, and we want to get this land use plan done. Okay. Moving on to the next item, but first, I think it's a good time for a break. It's almost 9:00 PM, and we usually break before now. My clock, my watch actually says 8:54. So if we can take a 10-minute break, reconvene at 9:05, that is the plan at this point. We'll move on to the next item at that point. Thank you, Mr. West, Shell Stiegel, and the staff. Land use plan, the finish line is in sight. Thank you very much. See you in 10 minutes. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. Town Clerk Smith, if you would do a roll call vote on this motion.
Councilmember Fender? Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rau?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to approve Resolution 2021-026-0 passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, sir. Just to acknowledge that we had some audio issues, we apologize to anyone who is watching, who didn't hear the audio of that. We just approved the appointment of 11 committee members to the new Smart City Committee, and we're very excited about that moving forward. Moving to the next item. We're now at item 12, future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. For a full listing of all our events, please see the town calendar at www.townofmorrissville.org. So great to share some exciting news. The Morrisville Community Library will be opening its doors this Friday, January 29th, at 10:00 AM for express service. Come on over and see what our brand-new library has to offer. It will be open from 10:00 AM until 6:00 PM this Friday. The following morning, this and every Saturday, the Morrisville Healthy Food Hub hosts the Western Wake Farmers Market from 9:30 AM until 12:00 noon. You can sign up for the newsletter at WWFM.ag to know which vendors will be selling their wares. Please save the date for the Morrisville Chamber Virtual Annual Meeting on Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021, from 11:30 AM until 1:30 PM. It's the 30th annual, annual meeting for this organization, and that's an important milestone. Just to remind you, in 1990, the population of Morrisville was 1,553 people, and we are now nearing 30,000. At this time, we're at item 13, council and manager comments. We'll start off with Mayor Protem Johnson, followed by my comments. Mayor Protem.
Uh, thank you. I just have two quick comments. I've been trying really hard to share with our citizens about any information about the vaccine rollout, and just want folks to know a couple of things. One, Durham County Department of Public Health is scheduled to hold a mass vaccination in early February. That's in partnership with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. So please be on the lookout for that mass vaccination event in February. There's no date yet. And the other thing I really want to make sure folks understand, if they don't already, because there's a lot of frustration out there about how to get vaccinated, but there is no residency requirement, so you may go anywhere to get vaccinated. If you can find an appointment in a neighboring county, you can go there to get vaccinated. There is no residency requirement. Quite frankly, there is no requirement for you to even stay within the state of North Carolina to get a vaccination. This is a rollout from the federal government, and you may be vaccinated wherever you can get an appointment. As frustrating as this all is right now, I know in time, we'll get a better handle. The state will get a better handle, the federal government will get a better handle on this rollout. But be on the lookout for the Durham County mass vaccination site that's coming, and do not forget to look at FindMyGroup.NC.gov. If you're not sure of where you fall in the phases of vaccination, FindMyGroup.NC.gov. I went out there and kind of played around with it a little bit, and it's very clear where we all, where each one of us falls in the phases. So just wanted to share that. And then the other thing I wanted to share is that the town of Morrisville lost a fabulous, longstanding Morrisville resident recently. Many of us know Tommy Two. Those who may not have known Tommy will remember maybe the barber shop that was there on Aviation. Tommy lived in the home right there on Aviation, right off the corner of 54 and Aviation Parkway, and had a barber shop toward the back of his house. Folks remember the old-style barber pole. I don't know if that's the right description. But anyhow, we've lost Tommy, and I want to extend all of our sympathies and condolences to Tommy's family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Tommy will be missed. I wanted to say Happy Indian Republic Day to all. We recognize today at our last meeting through a proclamation. As Mayor Protem mentioned, please continue to practice the three W's and download the Slow COVID NC app to your smartphone. If you have questions about vaccine distribution, she gave one site. I'm gonna give you another site. You can visit www.covid19.ncdhhs.gov/findyourspot, or you can also call the COVID-19 line, 877-490-6642. It's a free call. That's all I've got for tonight. Just be safe and be well. And now Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
I have no comments, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Rau.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to brag on my neighborhood for a minute. The Baby Moon Cafe, as a lot of us know, was broken into last week, and there was property damage, and a lot of people in my neighborhood know the owners of that cafe. So we all got together on Monday night, and all of us ordered from Breckenridge and had dinner delivered, and just to show support of the restaurant and the owners. And it made me stand a little taller to be a Breckenridge resident, frankly. That's all I have.
That's very nice. That was a great lunch place, and we actually had one of our meetings with the Carytown Council at that site, which is really great. I'm sorry to hear about their being broken into. Councilmember Rau, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Well, I, all my points on the vaccine have already been made, just a reminder to go to those websites, and that you don't have to live in the county, and, you know, and they are running out of vaccines, so just be patient. And I wanted to, first of all, say that I really want to extend my condolences to Tommy Two and his family. He cut three generations of Rau men's hair since my son was five and my father, and until I had hair, and then he quit cutting mine. But he was such a great man, and I'm gonna really miss him. And then the final thing is, I really want to thank the staff for the National Day of Service events that we hosted. I think it was just really wonderful, and I want to congratulate all the Servant Leader Awards. I'm not gonna name them all tonight. And the COVID Memorial, where we had the lights on. I think it just, I really want to thank communications and the staff for really stepping up and doing such a great job, even in the pandemic, so that we can at least show people that we're such a strong community. So I want to thank the team, and great meeting tonight, and everyone be safe and be well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
Thank you, mayor. Well, first of all, I'd like to say that I am really honored to serve on the Morrisville Town Council, because I believe that our community is so inclusive, and we really are a strong community. And I would like to say that the Education Committee is working very hard, and they have initiated a, they call it a Community Needs Assessment Survey, and they would really love to have your input. They are collecting information through February 7th. I did not find this survey on the website of the town. I would like to see their information provided on the homepage until the survey is down, if that's okay. I would also like to see some more Facebook. Where I found the survey was on LinkedIn, and LinkedIn is a great medium for gathering information, but we should try to add more channels to allow that Community Needs Assessment have more valuable input, which it really needs. With that said, I know that everybody is working very hard to provide different ways that we can improve education opportunities across our town. And recently, there was a comment and a suggestion about trying to brainstorm about community options at our planning board, and they mentioned RTP and Durham County Schools as being maybe an option. And it just struck a chord with me, that both RTP and Durham County are neighbors, but more importantly, Morrisville actually sits in Durham County just a little bit, and mostly Wake County. So I did a little bit more digging, and we do have some residences that are in Durham County, and our Morrisville neighbors attend Durham County Schools. So when I looked at the charter for our Education Committee, it only says Wake County. And although that is true for the majority of our families in Morrisville, it is not completely accurate for all of our families. So I'd like consideration to add some language about some of the residences of Morrisville, the neighbors, have Durham County Public Schools. And we should be inclusive, and in District 4, which is my district, that's the district that has the Durham County neighborhood. So actually, there's one building right now, but there's future- So actually, there's one building right now, but there's future development there as well. So I just appreciate a little bit of feedback or input on that. But please take the survey. It's a really good opportunity to raise your voice. Thank you.
Thank you so much for bringing attention to that survey. And would you be amenable to having the Public Education Committee sort of look at itself about adjusting its charter and bringing that forward to us? If they, with your idea?
Well, I have some ideas, but if they wanted to make a recommendation, and then we can bring it back through the briefing process to make that formal adjustment, I think that would be great.
Okay, that sounds good. I believe Ms. Hudson is on the call, who is our liaison to that committee. I'm going to recognize Councilmember Garamella, and then I'm going to circle back to Councilmember Fender. Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, actually, no comments other than saying Happy Republic Day. And obviously, stay safe. I hope we all get the vaccine soon. And I'm very happy with the initiative, like, you know, max vaccination. I had the opportunity to speak to Todd Wright last week, and he said that by mid-February, a lot of change is coming, and a lot of vaccination drives are going. And I think just after he said on Friday, I started seeing all these things. And it's very encouraging that the initial frustration that people had, I think that all will be smoothed out pretty soon. Thank you.
Yeah, because I believe he's State Emergency Management now, so he's definitely right in the thick of things. Remind me, Councilmember Garamella, how long did you live in India before you moved over?
I was there till my 19th birthday.
Okay, so you celebrated many India Republic Days in India.
Yeah.
Okay, that's really cool. Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, now I have a comment. Vicki, or Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson brought up a good point about the residents who are Morrisville residents that live in Durham County. I believe there's about 10 houses in Kits Creek that are just over that county line. And those residents have actually started a petition. They want to be in Wake County. Right now, the kids that are in Durham County, for whatever reason, the bus will not drive into our neighborhood. So the kids have to walk quite a bit to get to their bus stop in Durham County. So those residents actually are trying to be part of Wake County. And I just wanted to make the council aware of that.
Okay, that would be another item that I think might be appropriate for the Public Education Committee to take a peek at, and maybe even PISA, Public Safety, about them having to walk further than necessary and actually leave our town in order to get to a bus stop. So I imagine staff will give us a little report back after they do a little assessment on that. Okay, at this time, I'd like to recognize Town Manager Paige for any updates or questions she might have for us. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one that I hope is quick. Last Wednesday, I sent council just an updated Version 2 proposed draft of the Town Council Retreat. All of the things that were on the original draft version are still there. We have added a public works facility update and an election early voting update, and then just moved some things around a little bit to accommodate staff availability and keep things in some good, appropriate order. It would move the brainstorming by council to fresh start on Saturday, which I think also works well. But really trying to get sort of a head nod, go-ahead, so that staff can start preparing for the retreat and make sure that this draft agenda meets your needs.
Okay, so we give thumbs up. And if you have any issues with what Town Manager has put forth, please let us know in the chat. Otherwise, in this case, it will be silence equals consent, or consensus in this case. Okay. Okay, Martha, did you get what you need?
Yes, silence is golden. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else from staff? Town Manager Paige?
No, sir.
Okay. I just want to note that I'm understanding the governor might be speaking tomorrow about any potential changes or adjustments to the orders that are going on. Our staff has been spectacularly responsive about sharing those out and how they affect the town as quickly as able. So please keep an eye on our social media channels in regards to any changes that the governor might put forth, or any guidelines from Secretary of Health, Dr. Cohen, who is also making some important statements. Okay, that's it for council comments. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao.
Don't move, and I'm not turning my video on.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
I second that motion.
Thank you very much. Town Clerk Smith, if you could please do a roll call vote of our council members on the motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, passes unanimously.
It is 9:30 PM. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Our next meeting is Tuesday, February 9th at 6:00 PM, and we'll determine at a later time whether or not that will be virtual or in person. Thank you very much. Have a great week.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Bye. Have a good evening.